All right, good morning. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the morning of June 17th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Kamai, Campos, Salas, Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
President.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas, Casey, Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Today's invocation will be provided by Milan Ballinton, Executive Director of the African-American Community Service Agency, and Councilmember Mulcahy will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Milan Ballinton, please join me in welcoming him as Executive Director of the African-American Community Service Agency. Since becoming Executive Director in 2011, Milan has grown AACSA from a small team into a thriving organization that serves thousands in the community, offering educational, cultural, and social programs that strengthen African-American identity and heritage. A proud Bay Area native and Oakland-born leader, Milan holds a BA from San Jose State University. Go Spartans![135.44][135.44](Applause) And a Master of Public Administration from Golden Gate University. He is passionately committed to mentoring youth and championing equity, having played instrumental roles in numerous community initiatives, including leading the successful effort to establish Juneteenth as a paid holiday in Santa Clara County, making it the first county in California to do so. And what a fabulous Juneteenth celebration he and his colleagues threw in downtown San Jose this past Saturday. Milan's leadership embodies the spirit of service and honoring those who sacrificed for freedom, a message especially meaningful as we approach the observance of Juneteenth this Thursday. He is truly an inspiration throughout San Jose and is our honor to welcome him here at City Hall today. Thank you.[193.26][193.26](Applause)
Thank you, Councilmember Mulcahy, Mayor, City Council, and all distinguished guests here today. When I was a child, I was awakened by singing that my parent would always say, "Rise and shine and give God the glory, glory." And now in my older years, which I like to say "older years," I am reminded of that. If we can please bow our heads today. I'm going to take this moment to bring us before the throne and the grace of God, one who has created each and every one of us to do some amazing things, to take on challenges and reach into different communities not like one of our own, to make sure that we take care of humanity, specifically here in the 12th largest city in the United States, to listen to one another, to not necessarily always just debate the matter, but deal with the underlying issues, to recreate how we can heal, how we can recover, and how we can take care of not only ourselves, but our fellow brothers and sisters. May today be about love. And taking the scripture from 1 Corinthians where we talk about "love is patient, love is kind," is that we remove the word "love" today and we put our names there. For example, Milan is patient, Milan is kind, Milan does not boast. Put your name there. Guide our leaders when they listen to the public on decisions that they will vote on to ensure that their decisions are sound, reasonable, and ultimately truth. May those who are in the audience support our leaders, not only holding them accountable, but cheering them on in the journeys that they have taken as their leaders. Empower their staff members who work hours to ensure that over a million people get the services that they need, feel encouraged in their work that they are serving the people, from the fire department to the police department to our hospitals to our nonprofits, to those who are in here reporting the news, and to those who are young and looking for us for a sense of safety. Guide us on this journey in this place we call Earth, in this special place called San Jose. And to the woman, Deion Warwick, who wrote the Psalm, "Do you know your way to San Jose?" May everyone know their way to San Jose. Amen. Thank you.[356.91][356.91](Applause)
Thank you so much, Milan, for all your leadership in the community and those words of wisdom. Wonderful way to start our meeting today. We appreciate you. We're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Mulcahy, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize the South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition.
In the early 1990s, facing significant budget cuts, the city of San Jose found itself unable to adequately maintain the cleanliness and health of our local creeks. During this challenging period, the one and only Steve Holmes stepped up with a bold vision and founded the South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition, a volunteer-driven community initiative dedicated to protecting and revitalizing our waterways. What began along the Los Gattis Creek Trail has since blossomed to include efforts on the Guadalupe River and Coyote Creek. For over 12 years, SBCC has remained unwavering in its mission, reclaiming and restoring our creeks by removing trash, enhancing water quality, and nurturing native wildlife habitats. Over that time, the Coalition has collected more than a million pounds of trash throughout over 489 community cleanups. SBCC has also partnered with local artists to transform the debris they've collected into murals, art contests, videos, and other creative projects that engage and inspire the community. SBCC's success is rooted in its ability to engage the community, build strong local partnerships, and maintain a long-term commitment to environmental stewardship. This Coalition not only plays a vital role in caring for our waterways, but also stands as an inspiring example for other community-based organizations striving to make a difference. Today, on behalf of the City of San Jose and the entire City Council, we proudly commend the South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition for their dedicated service and outstanding contributions to preserving and enhancing our local environment. Thanks especially to Executive Director Steve Holmes, Operations Manager Carol Simkowitz, Board Members Chuck, Rick, Brian, Alicia, and others, as Antonio Gutierrez, Josh Lopez, Mike Tomaro, and many more. Now, I'll hand it off to Steve himself, the founder, for a few words.[544.04][544.04](Applause)
I hope you guys can see the video that's going to be playing. This is our local salmon that come in each year and spawn in our local waterways. But I'm Steve Holmes. I'm the founder of South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition. This effort sprung from an internet search I did 13 years ago. I typed into the search engine "salmon in San Jose," and I was expecting to see filets in a supermarket shelf. But what actually came up was a salmon, a 30-pound salmon that was on the Guadalupe trying to get up over a barrier unsuccessfully. So this fish would jump up and then fall back down, and I'm a fisherman, and it really kind of shocked me because I had no idea that we had these salmon coming right into our local waterways. And so that was kind of the impetus to start this organization. And along the way, we've found a lot of people that wanted to come out and help try and heal our waterways. If we look at the... Each year, we count the fish that come into our waterways, and the goal is to get up to 2,000 fish, because if we get to that level, the NOAA and CDFW, they believe that that could be a sustainable level of fish that would be returning each year. So that is our goal. I also want to thank all of the volunteers that are here today. And generally, we're in dirty outfits and vests, and you walk away a little bit messy. So I'm not really recognizing all these people behind me, but they say they're our volunteers. We probably have about 2,500 people that come out and support on and off. And I guess the last part of this is I would encourage people in the audience, if you're looking for something to do as far as for the community, and it's good for the soul. So I would invite anyone to look at our page on Facebook, South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition, and come out and join us. Thank you.[669.41][669.41](Applause)
Councilor Cohen, now let's recognize Eloy Rodriguez.
Today, we are here to honor someone whose quiet professionalism, quick thinking, and deep care for others turned a dangerous moment into a powerful example of public service and courage. Eloy Rodriguez is more than a driver. He is a community-committed man who believes deeply in collaboration, service, and care for all. For more than 20 years, Eloy has served as a professional driver for California Waste Solutions in the city of San Jose. In fact, he's been driving professionally since 1977. He takes pride in his work, not just as a job, but as a contribution to the community he loves. Eloy shows his commitment every single day through his care for customers, their property, and his belief in providing excellent customer service to every household he serves. But on May 23rd, 2025, Eloy went above and beyond. While on his route in the Nolan Ranch neighborhood, his recycling truck, Unit SJC03, caught fire. Many would panic, but Eloy didn't. With calm and courage, he steered the burning truck away from homes, businesses, and traffic, guiding it safely onto Blue Jacket Way. Because of his quick thinking, the burning load was safely ejected and extinguished by the San Jose Fire Department. No one was injured and only minor damage occurred, thanks entirely to Eloy's fast, selfless action. This is who Eloy is, a dedicated professional, a caring neighbor, a proud single father of five children, and today, we are honored to be joined by his youngest daughter, Grace, who is here with us. Eloy Rodriguez, on behalf of the San Jose... At the City of San Jose, thank you. Your courage and commitment embody the very best of public service. We are lucky to have you serving our community, and even luckier to have you as part of our city family.[848.14][848.14](Applause)
I want to thank you for having me here and having the privilege of serving the community and for giving me the opportunity to give this speech. My priority is the community, the safety of everyone, and I do that with a full dedication, with integrity, and wholehearted, because everyone means a lot to me. I'm a single parent, and I know how it feels also, being... Taking care of someone who is dear to me. So, thank you so much. Very thank. I appreciate it, all of you. Thank you.[904.23][904.23](Applause)
All right. Councilor Salas, if you'd join me here at the podium, we will recognize Mary Tucker.
someone who has served our community so, so well, for as long as I can even imagine almost. Our downtown neighborhoods are fortunate to have many engaged residents. I know a lot of you here who have stepped up to provide leadership, expertise, activism, just plain energy to make downtown San Jose and all of San Jose a great place to live. Today, I am particularly proud, though, to recognize one of our greatest, one of the greatest of all of you leaders, Ms. Mary Tucker. Mary Tucker worked for the City of San Jose in Environmental Services for, I think, 23 years. It's over two decades, for sure. And once City Hall was relocated to this site, she lived just three blocks away in the Hensley District in a home which was awarded the Beautification Award of the City. But she didn't get... She didn't just retire. She's always been active in the Hensley neighborhood, and she became the president of the Local Neighborhood Association. She was a dynamic leader, committed to increasing community engagement, beautifying the neighborhood, and partnering with nearby neighborhood associations for joint projects. She's always done it all and more than all. In addition to that work, she produced several district-wide emergency preparedness workshops. Through these well-organized events, residents could interact with the city, county, and other experts for education, hands-on training, and free earthquake kits in preparation for the big one. Mary was always determined to act where needed. She didn't just silo herself. She not only made her community better, but she instilled her activism in others. She is truly a role model for our community leadership, and today, I'm really, really proud to join the mayor and my fellow councilmembers in honoring this wonderful woman, Ms. Mary Mary is traded saying any words with letting me have a little extra-long hug, so please bear with me.[1112.92][1112.92](Laughter)
Why don't you come back here real quick? I want to invite Councilmember Salas back up here, along with our city manager, Jennifer McGuire, and our city librarian, Jill Bourne, for a quick, special ceremonial item. Councilor Salas, since today is your last council meeting, we wanted to take a moment to thank you for your service to the City of San Jose. Carl stepped up to serve at a time when District 3 residents were facing a great deal of uncertainty, turmoil, and loss of trust. It's never easy to step into public office, much less given the circumstances Carl faced. But he did so with grace, care, and a clear sense of duty to the community he has been a part of for so long. Over the past several months, he's helped steer District 3 through some of its most complex challenges, showing up to every conversation prepared, thoughtful, and focused on solutions. He brought a calm and steady voice to every council meeting, and he never lost sight of the people behind the policies, working families, small business owners, and neighbors who count on us to get the basics right. Carl loves San Jose, and he's shown that love through action. He listens to every community member and voices their thoughts for when, too long in some cases, they have been left unheard. He consistently advocates for positive changes in Guadalupe River Park, notably championing the removal of the blighted carousel, and he's stuck around for my entire state of the city, rolling up his sleeves to get community improvement projects done. He almost outlasted me at that event. I also want to thank the District 3 staff who have remained loyal and committed to serving their constituents despite so much upheaval. Carl, your time on this council may have been brief, but your impact has been meaningful. You've reminded us of what it means to step up in service to something bigger than ourselves. So in true downtown fashion, Carl rides his bike everywhere. Rain or shine, he's pedaling to City Hall or a neighborhood meeting. But far too often, I catch him riding without a helmet. So, Carl, before you go, just in case you don't have one, I'm giving this to you.[1348.23][1348.23](Applause) And Carl, I'm going to miss you serving in this capacity, but I know, as was the case before you became a council member, we're going to continue to see you throughout the downtown and just doing so much to make our community a better place. You give back in a lot of different ways, and we're just grateful that in this really tough moment, you stepped up to provide a steady hand on the rudder and be that source of stability for this district. So we're grateful to you. I want to invite our city manager to say a few words, and then we'll turn to our city librarian for a special tradition we have. City Manager McGuire.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the administration, I also want to give our heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Carl Salas for stepping up and stepping into the role of interim council member. You've just made a tremendous impact. Your staff has been wonderful, and we've been really lucky to have them stay on as well. But you've really thought about the city as a whole and in service to the District 3 residents and businesses in everything you've done. You've got a... Just a love for the city that's just infectious. Your smile and energy comes through with every item that you deal with, and we all can take away something from that. It's very, very positive. The tradition that we're continuing today is the addition of some library books to our collection on behalf of the council member, which our librarian Jill Bourne will talk a little bit more about, but they're going to be available for anybody with a library card to check out. So again, I don't think it's a goodbye. I think it's going to be a "see you later, see you soon," because we know that your service to the city will continue on, even not in this role. So thank you very much, Councilmember Salas.[1476.83][1476.83](Applause)
Thank you so much. I'll just add that it is a tradition that outgoing council members are honored through a donation of books that reflect them as city leaders in their time here. And so, in our own experience with the council member, was tremendous support for learning opportunities, especially in STEM fields, and supporting our digital inclusion programs through the new SJ Access Tech Hub, especially the celebration we had at the Roosevelt Community Center through our partner with PRNest. So thank you so much for all your support. We have a wonderful collection of books that will support our literacy programs, including summer reading and summer learning around STEM fields, and especially with your expertise, as well as bicycle safety. So thank you so much.[1532.01][1532.01](Applause)
I'm going to just look at a couple of these, because I want to say a couple of Future engineer. So I'm going to give a pitch for engineering. Engineering is a great profession. I'd encourage all of you to tell your kids, "Be an engineer." My dad did that. He was an attorney, by the way. Our dad was an attorney, and he always said, "Don't be an attorney, be an engineer." He kind of browbeat us into being engineers, but it worked out. Oh, and then this. "I survived the shark attack." That's kind of how I feel. Yeah.[1575.11][1575.11](Laughter)
It's oceanography.
Oh, it's oceanography. I'm sorry. I told somebody in the elevator this morning, they said, "How do you feel about this being your last meeting?" And I said, "Well, being on council is kind of like being at a really great Disneyland ride where you throw up a couple of times in the middle of the ride."[1591.11][1591.11](Laughter) Thank you very, very, very much. So Mayor, I know how busy you are, but you're going to have to show me which of the front... What is the front of this? I'm not sure.[1604.01][1604.01](Laughter) Does this turn around?
It does.
Oh, don't worry about it.[1611.11][1611.11](Laughter) I just want to tell all of you... So I'm turning 74 in a couple of weeks, and I've always considered myself... My wife and I, almost every day, just count our blessings. We feel like really, really blessed and lucky, lucky, lucky people. And I just want to tell you that serving on this council, I feel like I've done so many things in my life, accomplished so many things, experienced so many things, but serving in this council has been one of the most eye-opening and meaningful experiences of my life, and I really mean that with my depth of my heart. It's really something... I wanted to say rare air, but rare air kind of sounds like you have Lear jets you're flying around in. It's not that kind of rare. It's just one of the most hardest, frustrating, interesting, rewarding Disney rides. And I just... As much as a wonderful experience I had representing my constituents, I have gained such a respect for each of you, just every single one of you. It has just been a pleasure. I didn't know any of you. I remember... Well, I knew Pam, but I didn't know anyone else. And I just want to tell each of you, you're definitely different, but it has been truly a profound experience, and I just want to thank all of you for embracing me, for being honest with me, and for pulling me aside sometimes and telling me what not to do. By the way, I put on black this morning, not for any reason, but I noticed all my staff has black on, too.
All right. We are on to orders of the day, and we'll start with the adjournment. Today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Shirley Marie Denapoli Mulcahy Shirro, a lifelong San Jose resident who passed away on September 28th, 2024. From her early work in the canning industry to her support for Lincoln Avenue's revival, Shirley helped shape the city she loved, and her work helped shape our city's cultural and civic identity. A dedicated volunteer, she gave generously to groups like Children's Musical Theater San Jose, San Jose Jazz, the Italian-American Heritage Foundation, and many other organizations. Her legacy is one of service, vision, and deep love for San Jose. Councilmember Mulcahy, please... Councilmember Mulcahy, please tell us more about an exceptional woman and one who I know loved you very much.
I didn't know we were going to have such an emotional start to the meeting today with Carl leaving, but... So, no small secret, this is my mother, and I know for a fact that if I wasn't sitting in this seat, that someone else on this council would have adjourned this meeting in her honor. She passed away in late September of last year, in the throes of our political campaign. My sisters Erin Mulcahy Stein and Paula Mulcahy Keen are here to honor my mother, and we'll let them speak for me and for the family.
Yeah, you're good there. We turned it around. There you go. Oh, no, no. Don't follow Carl's lead. You're good there. You can pull the mic down a little if you...
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. So, a little bit of what we were going to say about my mom has already been said so beautifully by the mayor, but you'll bear with us. Honorable Mayor, council members, and members of the San Jose community behind me. Today, we honor and remember the extraordinary life and legacy of Shirley Denapoli Mulcahy Shiro, a proud daughter of San Jose, a devoted mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, sister, and friend, whose presence shaped the very fabric of our city. Shirley passed away on September 28th, 2024, five weeks before Michael would be elected to serve on the city council in districts she resided in for 72 of her 95 years. Shirley's story is woven into the San Jose history and a key figure in the transition from Valley of Hearts Delight to the capital of Silicon Valley. Born here in 1928, she grew up in a family whose entrepreneurial spirit helped drive the city's growth. Alongside her fathers and brothers, Shirley played a pivotal role in San Jose's historic canning industry, working at Sun Garden Packing and Mayfair Packing, an industry that once defined our region and provided livelihoods for countless families here. Her business sense, work ethic, and integrity were legendary. She was a woman who understood the value of hard work, the importance of loyalty, and the necessity of adapting to change. As a result of the onset of the tech industry, beginning in the 1980s, and the rising costs of canning in Santa Clara County, the family fully committed to its transition to real estate development. Her father, our grandfather Frank Denapoli, along with then-appraiser Lou Wolf, developed the first-ever redevelopment agency project in San Jose's history, building Park Center Plaza, now known as J. Paul City Center. In 1995, she joined her children in building a successful real estate portfolio that would become a cornerstone of Willow Glen's revitalization. Through the family firm SDS Next Gen Partners, named in her honor, Shirley helped restore historic buildings, revive iconic signage, and invest in local businesses that brought new life to Lincoln Avenue. Her vision and leadership transformed the former Sun Garden canary site into a vibrant shopping center, and her family's investments have supported beloved neighborhood restaurants and gathering places that continue to enrich our community today. Shirley's life was a tapestry woven with love, loyalty, and a fiery spirit. She was known for her directness, never shy to offer advice. Her honesty was matched only by her generosity, her ability to connect with people from all walks of life, and her deep belief in showing up for those she loved. She gave her time and heart to organizations that enrich our city: Children's Musical Theater San Jose, Notre Dame, her alma mater, Bellarmine Presentation, Valley Monte League, Little Italy Foundation, Italian-American Heritage Foundation, Sister Cities Program, and so, so many more. Her flair for fashion was legendary and was her enviable head of hair. But beyond her style and spirit, Shirley's true legacy lies in her unwavering commitment to family and community. She taught us the importance of loyalty, of working hard, of giving back, and of embracing life's challenges with courage and humor. Shirley's impact was not just economic, but deeply personal. She believed in the power of neighborhoods, in the importance of community organizations, and in the value of collaboration to solve the city's greatest challenges. Now, as we remember Shirley, let us be inspired by her example, a woman whose business acumen, courage, and generosity helped shape our city's past and continues to guide its future. May we honor her by embracing her values: to work hard, invest in our community, and always look for ways to lift one another up. Thank you so much for allowing my sister and I and the rest of my siblings here to recognize our mother Shirley. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your mother's incredible story with us, and we're, again, very sorry for your loss. One other item under Orders of the Day, item 2.53, Defensive Public Employees under Government Code Section 995.8, is a new addition to the agenda and would require a two-thirds vote of approval from the city council to move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to add it to consent?
Move to add?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other changes to the printed agenda colleagues would like to propose?
Yeah, I was going to ask you if you could pull from the consent calendar, item 2.4.
We'll get to consent in a moment. A couple of things first. Sorry. Well, yeah. Noted, though. Any... Thank you. I don't think we have anything else under Orders of the Day. Tony, do we have public comment on Orders of the Day? And again, this is a vote on item 2.53 that we would add.
We do not.
Okay. Coming back to the council, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. And then we'll go to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session, and I wanted to also say that Councilmember Candelaus contacted me this morning and asked me to state publicly that he's not here today because of illness. He's been very sick, so he will not make it to this meeting and was not a closed session. Thank you.
Sorry to hear that. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. So, we're then on to item 3.3. This is approval of various budget actions for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Tony, do we have public comment on item 3.3?
I have no cards for that item.
Okay. Coming back to the council for questions, discussion, or a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Not seen any other hands.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Right on to item 3.4, excuse me, Adoption of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance and Annual Funding Sources Resolution for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget and Resolution Establishing the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Appropriation Limit. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Coming back to the council on item 3.4.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the consent calendar, and I'm aware of a few items here. As I... Let me just make sure I've got this right, and I'll let Councilwoman Mulcahy do this, but I believe he's going to recuse himself on item 2.23. Councilwoman Campos, I believe, wants to pull item 2.2. Councilmember Casey would like to pull item 2.32. And I'm pulling item 2.33. Are there any others? Okay. Let me go to Councilwoman Mulcahy first.
Thank you, Mayor. On item 2.23, I'm going to recuse myself. We have a very modest contract with Brightview Landscape Services, so out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to step out of the room and not vote on this item.
Okay. Sounds good. So, Nora, should we go and take that item up separately and first, so that the council can then rejoin us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll let Councilwoman Mulcahy step away from the dais. Colleagues, why don't we start by entertaining a motion or any questions or discussion? This is on item 2.23 specifically.
Move for approval.
Second.
Great. Okay. Not seen any other hands. Tony, do we have public comment on item 2.23 specifically?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Let's come back and vote on that.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Nora will go get Councilmember Mulcahy. Why don't we then go on to item... Just going in order here, let's go to item 2.2, pulled by Councilmember Campos. This is Final Adoption of Ordnances, and we'll start with Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, my colleagues had time to see the joint memo put forth by Councilmember Cohen, Candelaus, Ortiz, and myself. I am going to make a motion to approve that memo, and I also have some questions to our chief, Paul Joseph. And so, as he makes his way down, I do want to, again, thank our city attorney for preparing these ordinances, as was directed through the mayor's March budget message. I also want to thank Mayor Mahan, councilmembers Dwan, Mulcahy, and Cohen for their leadership in elevating the problem of van lording, which we know is a predatory behavior that targets our most vulnerable community members. And we've all heard alarming and disturbing stories from business owners, particularly in downtown and other parts of the city, where there have been instances of individuals that harass and assault customers, tenants, destroying properties, creating nuisance. Some of us on the council have seen this destructive behavior firsthand. And while existing ordinances prohibit assault, destruction of property, drug use, and nuisance, the intent of the proposed ordinance that prohibits trespass on private property, the goal is to provide another tool for property owners and business owners to remove any individual who does not have their consent to be on their property or in their business. And so, Chief, under the ordinance, as is proposed, will SJPD proactively enforce when there is a no trespassing sign, or will SJPD only enforce when a private property owner contacts SJPD to report trespassing, regardless of whether a no trespassing sign is posted?
Paul Joseph, Chief of Police. So, for a private property trespassing, we will always need authorization from the owner of the property or their agent, so we would not proactively be enforcing it. We would be enforcing it in response to a complaint, most likely from the owner or agent.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think the concern that... I'd like to share an uplift with my colleagues is that the language, as is written, is a bit ambiguous, which is why that question is so important for the chief to answer, so that we have clarity around how this ordinance will or will not impact police response. And so, my next question is, if the ordinance is adopted as proposed, will there be any... Sorry, let me rephrase. The memo that we're proposing seeks to clarify the language in the ordinance as proposed. Through this memo, we are not trying to add any additional barriers to police being able to respond. What we are looking for is clarity on how this will be implemented. So, aside from returning to us in August with the implementation plan for the trespass, do you see this memo creating any additional barriers to being able to enforce the ordinance?
So, as I read it, I don't see a change in the process or procedure for which we would need to go through to make a trespassing arrest, but as you acknowledged, it would delay our ability to start until after we came back in August and provided that clarification that you're seeking.
Thank you, Chief. I think it's important to note that being thoughtful in our process for how we are moving forward on ordinances that will both support the needs of our business and property owners while also maintaining civil liberties to our residents and ensuring that, especially in a time like now, at a political climate where people are fearing leaving their homes due to immigration concerns, I think it's incredibly important that we are sensitive in our approach, and having additional time to bring forth enough time to provide a thoughtful implementation plan is what provides me the reassurance that we are both making a strong commitment to our business and property owners, but also all of the residents in our community who want to ensure their safety and well-being and respecting the rights of business and property owners who report illegal trespassing or other destructive behavior, that the city will take action. So, I want to move into van lording, which is the other part of this memo. As we know, there are nearly 1,000 households living in vehicles, and that number is growing. San Jose currently only has two safe parking sites for RVs, and as of tonight, there are zero open spaces, as I understand it. So, that means that we have nearly 800 vehicle dwellers with no legal place to park or sleep in the city. And if people are being sighted and towed, even when they have no alternatives, effectively what we are doing is penalizing people who are experiencing poverty, knowing full well that they are just trying to survive. And this is not the kind of enforcement that I believe is the intent of this van lording ordinance. We need to ensure that what this ordinance does is consider, you know, whether someone is employed quiet or respectful, and placing more emphasis on the person rather than the vehicle that is parked. The city is directing $2.1 million to enforce this ordinance without offering housing, safe parking, or an off-ramp. And rather than creating solutions to address homelessness, what we are doing is creating a very expensive way that accelerates street homelessness, because people living in RVs without an alternative solution will move to our streets, will move to our creeks, and displacing, who we know are mostly low-income and immigrant families, is a huge civil rights concern waiting to happen. And so, I support the other provisions in the proposed ordinance prohibiting van lording, but I encourage my colleagues to seriously consider the impact of the blanket ban on sleeping in RVs, which could, as an unintended consequence, increase the number of people who sleep on the streets and in tents, which will only create new and worsened quality of life and environmental impacts. So, to this end, I, again, appreciate the ongoing efforts of our police department to work together on addressing these issues, and that might have been all of my questions for now. So, thank you.
And Councilwoman, did you make...
And I did make a motion, so if there is a second...
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, let me go to Councilwoman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I wanted to... I know there's been some questions regarding Brown Act, and since we do Brown Act clarification, I want to make sure I start with that. Last week, we took a vote on these ordinances, and, you know, presumably, there was a Brown Act that had been created, but we had public conversation on these ordinance last week. Once that public conversation and vote happens, which is the purpose of the Brown Act, to make sure that deliberations happen publicly, future actions, and my interpretation of the Brown Act has always been that future actions can reconstitute a Brown Act with new people without, as long as I'm not further discussing with people I was in the previous act. I was in the previous action with. So I just want to make sure that's clarification of my interpretation. And I've certainly, over the years, been in multiple Brown Acts on van lording that probably constitute 75% of the people on this dais, and so it's hard to, there's no continuity necessarily from one action to another. I just wanted to first start by saying that we went through a lot last, we had a lot of conversations, a lot of actions on last week's agenda, a large number of ordinances and things that were happening in the context of a concern from the public over, potentially overly aggressive enforcement without an equivalent amount of, of help for people who are unhoused on our streets. And, you know, I, we had, we had promoted a code of conduct last week, which I think gives us a lot of extra tools to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and people are safe. But we, this had, this had evolved over just a period of just three months from what was framed as primarily about responsibility to shelter and people being taken into custody for not accepting shelter, to something that I think was different than that. But yet, the public framing of that issue has continued to be that the, focused only on that one element of last week's meeting, which was the city voted to allow the police to arrest people who are homeless, who don't accept housing. And unfortunately, I don't feel that that was the, the tenor of this council meeting, but that's still the tenor of the public receipt of that information. In that context, I think there were some legitimate questions about how we are going to implement some of the policies we put in place. I signed on to the memo with my colleagues, actually not fully agreeing that there was an issue with the trespassing ordinance, because I have been in a situation in my district with multiple cases of trespass on private property, where the property owner is out, lives in another part of the Bay Area, and we need to make sure that they, that we have the ability to, to manage. Once the property owner gives notice, we now have to have tools to make sure that notice is not on every time an action is taken, but is, allows us to continually take action. I fully support that. Don't, don't want to make a change to that ordinance. My preference in this case is to have a motion that asks for implementation of the trespassing ordinance, but with an info memo that comes back on what our implementation policy plans will be around that as we go into this fall. And so on that element, item, I would ask for a friendly amendment to ask for, to implement the ordinance, but ask for that info memo in August with the information about how it would be implemented.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that's, that's the first part of it. On the second part, on the van lording piece, and many of you know, I was, my office initiated the whole van lording idea several years ago and trying to create an ordinance. I'm fully in support of that. I want to ask Johnny some questions on the ordinance. I tried to ask them last week. I had some concern over the fact that the ordinance looks to be first about the, about the people living in the RVs rather than about the, what we're trying to prevent, which is the person who is exploiting that by leasing out RVs. My intention when bringing this forward was to ban the action of advertising and receiving payment from people to live in an RV on the street, but not changing or, or focusing that enforcement on the people who are in the RV. Now, I understand that we want to make sure that there's a nexus to a behavior. But when we had a conversation, and I, you know, before last week's council meeting in a private conversation, which my briefing on this topic, I did ask a question about, is there an alternative way to word this ordinance so that it's worded in a way about, so that, so that those two items about advertising and about receiving payment would be focused on the purpose of the use of the RV without having to have the element in the ordinance that specifies that it's illegal to be sleeping in the RV? So I'm, I'll ask you if you want to weigh in on that.
Matthew Toney, City Attorney's Office. Thank you for the question, councilmember. The answer is yes. You could remove the first provision that deals with just sleeping in the vehicle and focus only on the two provisions that deal with the rental.
And, and we would probably want to add some verbiage into those second and third bullets that clarifies the purpose of that. I mean, maybe it's already in there, but maybe make sure that that's clarified with some additional language in those second and third bullet points.
I believe the language is already in there, but we can take a look if we need to.
So my preference, and the reason why I signed on to this memo, was for that, to give us time to make that clarification. Given that we're not going to be proactively enforcing the van lording issue, delaying by a month that implementation till September so we have time to review a new, new language in August didn't bother me, or, but, but I want to know what you're thinking about that timing, being able to make that change, and what you think about, what that does to our, our ordinance.
If there is a motion that the council approves to delay the ordinance, we can provide an alternative ordinance in August, the next council meeting. If there's a vote to continue, we can report back on implementation.
Okay. All right. So I, I will support the motion on the floor that's amended to implement the trespassing ordinance, but come back with potential alternative language. We can see whether alternative language makes sense or not at that time, delays the implementation with, by about a month or two, I think, and gives us time to potentially clean up this language, which I think certainly caught me by surprise as, when I first saw it, and concerned me a little bit that the focus was on the wrong side of the equation on this item. That's my, that's my comment. Did you, Johnny, you've been, you've been kind of looking at me like you wanted to say something. That's why I'm kind of giving you a chance. So go ahead and weigh in if you want to.
Johnny Fan, Chief Deputy, City Attorney's Office. Yeah, I just want to clarify. Ultimately, it's a policy call from the city council whether you want to include the provision we have, which is subsection A, or to remove it. That section talks about prohibiting using a recreational vehicle to live in or as sleeping quarters between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And we were given direction to adopt a van lord ordinance to deal with individuals who are leasing out RVs, and that is the focus of this ordinance. But in looking at LA, other cities, and how they've been addressing van lord and the difficulty they've been dealing with in terms of enforcing their ordinance, we tried to include something in anticipation of how this is going to play out in court when we actually issue a criminal citation against an individual who are leasing out recreational vehicles. One of the main arguments that we anticipate is that the underlying act of sleep, using a recreational vehicle and sleeping on a public street is not illegal. So why am I, the individual who now is doing a legal business, receiving a criminal citation? And so we were anticipating that argument, in addition, looking at what, how LA is struggling with van lording and a few other cities, to craft something that is clear, enforceable, and is legally defensible. The provision A can be removed, as Matthew Toney indicated, but I will say that, yeah, the nexus won't be as strong, and there will be some explaining we'll have to do in a criminal court.
So let me just follow up on that, then. You said that the defense person would be that it's a legal business, but isn't the definition of a legal business what we're talking about in this ordinance? I mean, just because we're not, just because this ordinance doesn't say it's illegal to be sleeping in the RV doesn't necessarily mean that it's legal to rent some, lease somebody an RV, right?
Correct. And so, you know, when we draft an ordinance, we're anticipating one of the main arguments, right? So we're drafting something where, let's use percentages, for example, where we think, you know, the probability is, you know, 80% is defensible, we're going to actually win if challenged. Once you remove that, then the percentage drastically decreases. Not to say it will be zero, but it will be a more difficult argument if we're trying to enforce against the landlord. So that's what we're trying to figure out, is that balance, right? How do you draft an ordinance that addresses van lording, and the idea is to make sure we hold the van lord responsible? But also, if we're in court, we can actually prevail.
Don't we already have an element in our municipal code elsewhere that already addresses this?
Yeah, we do. So San Jose Municipal Code, sections, chapter 6.46 is actually dealing with mobile home parks and mobile home. And in that ordinance, which is probably drafted 40 to 50 years ago, there's some vague language about trailers, home cars, which are not defined, that are not allowed to be used as sleeping quarters on city streets. They should be in mobile home parks. That language is not something we have enforced over the years. Similar language in other cities, like Los Angeles, they've had difficulty enforcing similar language. So the short answer is there is some generic language under 6.46. But again, we were looking at if we were going to adopt a van lording ordinance dealing with recreational vehicles and van lording, we really wanted some clearer language to make it enforceable.
Okay. So, you know, my, again, back to my, my belief that giving ourselves a little extra time to make sure that we, we're comfortable with this language is worthwhile. Is, is there another possibility, which is that we might want to maybe just update the language in the other part of the municipal code and refer to it within this ordinance rather than have this ordinance look like it's primarily about sleeping in RVs?
Yeah, that is definitely one option. It, it doesn't quite fit in 6.46. That deals with mobile home, mobile home parks, to be honest. It doesn't quite fit. It was kind of in there for some reason. So the statutory scheme of 6.46 doesn't really deal with our situation. So we can make additional changes to that chapter, but the only problem with that is it doesn't quite fit in the statutory scheme. It may create more confusion. So that's why we thought it was a better idea to include specific provision in the van lording ordinance. And then the other thing I will point out is the city ultimately has prosecutorial discretion, right? I mean, this is all in the municipal code. There's thousands of different provisions. PD, our office is no one actively enforcing it. We have the tools, and, you know, it's usually complaint-driven, priority and resources. So, I mean, that's the other thing is we can have the language and keep it as is and exercise, based on council direction, our priorities and resources and how we prosecute it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion and the information on this particular issue. It's really interesting that we passed this last week, and it was a full agenda, that's for sure. But we passed this on 11 to 0 vote. And now we have a joint memo coming back with four signatures. I get that there's some second guessing or some looking at it a little bit deeper, and I understand that. But as I look at this, and I'm looking at this coming back, I'm wondering, what problem is this trying to solve? And even over the discussion, I still haven't heard what problem this is trying to solve. The, the portion that relates to the no trespassing and getting clarification from the property, property owner is problematic. Having to get an affirmative in writing, which is what the first item says, yes, and it states it differently in the body, but the point, the recommendation number one says that it has to be in writing. That's problematic, particularly if you have a property owner who's already posted a no trespassing sign and already given the police verbal authorization. As police, as Chief Joseph said, that's acceptable. Then to wait for something in writing may not happen right away and puts the property owner's property and, at risk. So I'm, I'm very concerned about provision number one. Councilmember Cohen, I have a question for you regarding your friendly amendment. Did you mean to indicate that you accepted, that you, the, the, the motion that was made included changes to item one? Did your motion mean to change item one and replace it with an info memo?
Right. My item, my, my friendly amendment would be not to proceed with changing the language on that, on item one, but just come back with an info memo on our implementation plans so that it's all clear to everybody. But it would no longer make the changes that you were referring to.
Okay, thank you. That helps. The, the second item, I'm concerned, and Johnny, you've stated it, it's about the defensibility of our ordinance as adopted and not running into the trap or the difficulty that LA had on defending it. Is it your recommendation, then, that we adopt the ordinance as it, well, we've already adopted it, so that we proceed with the ordinance as is, because as legal counsel, well, altered to Nora, of course, to confirm that that is the strongest, most defensible position for counsel, and that is your advice? That we leave the ordinance adopted last week alone?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We drafted this so that it was, in the most defensible way we could bring forward an ordinance based on council direction a few months ago. Part of the issue with the other, part of our municipal code that talks about sleeping in vehicle, in, in trailers, as Johnny and Matthew indicated, is that it's under the mobile home park section. And so it's.
So we took it out of that?
It, it really doesn't address this situation, number one. And number two, the language in that ordinance, even if you're considering places other than mobile home parks, is very antiquated and doesn't have any real definition. So in this ordinance, we attempted to define what a recreational vehicle is and what could be considered an inappropriate use of the recreational vehicle for sleeping on city streets through the night.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to offer a substitute motion, and that is that we adopt Mayor Mahan's memo, which accepts the ordinance as is, but include a language from Councilmember Cohen to provide an info memo on the implementation of item one in the recommendation from the joint memo. And with that, I move. Thank you. Thank you. So that concludes my comments.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Salas next.
Well, I was almost going to turn off my light after that motion. But I do want to mention that, you know, I mentioned I'm no attorney. I know a lot of thought went into this, and I also know that we're in crisis. And when I saw the memo yesterday, I think it came out the day before, whenever the memo came out, I was already against it. I was not going to support the memo. But I've received a number of emails from my constituents. We're in crisis on this issue of RVs, and we're in crisis on this issue of no trespassing. Last week, two weeks ago, I guess, there was a three-year-old got, got, almost got molested, but was threatened deeply in my district. We had gunshots the other day. I get calls three, four, five, 10 times a day, and emails about the RVs that have, that, yes, there are 1,000 of them here, but, but our police have not had the tools to be able to at least use their discretion. And that's the point I want to make. This is written as if our police don't use discretion. And I honestly believe our police force, I don't believe it's the best in the nation. I think it is the best in the nation because they are sensitive. They use their discretion, and I do not see them going out and towing 1,000 vehicles as soon as we implement this. So that's just a comment I wanted to make.
Agreed. Thanks, councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much. And, you know, one of the things I wanted to be clear on, Johnny, you said, you know, that you would take council direction on the van lording issue. And, you know, I just want to state that, you know, the intent is really to prosecute the van lord, that the, that the van tenant really is the victim here. And so I just want to, you know, say it out loud for the record that that is the intent of, of the council in terms of, we're not after someone who is the victim, because they may or may not know, right? But, but we are, we are putting a stop to those who are taking advantage of the situation and really direct it towards the van lord. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's go back to Councilor Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for sharing your thoughts and concerns. And I just want to clarify that the intent of the memo is only to ensure that we have language in our ordinance that is crystal clear. That is the only goal. I think that especially at a time where we may have a new city attorney, legal ambiguity around the word choice of our ordinances should be something that merits thoughtful processes. And I'm sorry for those who felt that this was rushed, but it felt rushed for me and my team as well to review all of these ordinances. And at the end of the day, I think we all strive to be thoughtful in our leadership and our policymaking and decision-making. I also strongly agree with what my colleagues are saying that. I also strongly agree with what my colleagues are saying, that property and business owners should be empowered to report crimes to the city in the way that is most convenient and comfortable to them. And as the ordinance states that admonishment is required to be recorded, the memo nowhere that we provided says that it has to come in writing. We want to make it as accessible to property owners to be able to, you know, have safe sites and protect their property. So what the memo that we're proposing includes the calling of 911, the emailing or texting a police captain, or talking with the officer in the vicinity. We learned that SJPD will not be enforcing this ordinance proactively. And so to my colleagues, what is being asked, what is being proposed, is to simply clarify the ambiguous language in the ordinance. Because the amendments that were drafted by the city attorney should be able to clarify that any type of report by a property or business owner via email, text, or through 911 will serve as the authorization by the property owner to SJPD to remove a trespasser. This language is not included. This is what we are trying to clarify, that documented authorization does not mean going through an onerous process or completing a standardized form, but that reporting trespassing should be the same as reporting any other ongoing crime. Reporting crimes to the city should be easy and streamlined. And so once a property or a business owner has reported the crime, SJPD should respond and provide the, you know, excellent quality of service that our residents, our businesses deserve. And so to reiterate, a property or a business owner should not need to report the crime multiple times, nor should they have to be physically present for SJPD to take action. This is not an additional barrier that we are trying to include in the memo. The goal is, and has always been, to ensure that the ordinance is crystal clear so that we leave no space for legal ambiguity.
Thanks, Councilmember. Tony, do we have public comment on item 2.2?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to public comment, and then we'll come back for a vote.
Gumby, come on down. First person to the microphone, you don't have to speak in the order that you're called. So when you're called, just go ahead and come down, first person to the microphone, start speaking, the others line up behind. So we have Gumby, Angel Aliano, Kat Angelou, Tristia Baumann, and Maria Ariano. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello again. Gumby from the San Jose Downtown Association. I'm here to speak on 2.2. The first part of the memo is actually confusing to me, not that difficult, actually, but I'm concerned about who, what the purpose is and who this will serve. And hearing the statements today and listening to the police chief, the potential of a delay, quite frankly, makes me a bit nervous. Not only in terms of how my D3 San Jose Downtown constituents feel about it, but also personally, this got really personally for me in the last two weeks, whereas I had the same situation that Councilmember Cohen described, with a vacant place and an absent landlord, and somebody came in and was actually threatening the neighborhood. And I don't have a lot of concerns myself, six foot two, like training martial arts my entire life. My wife is five foot nothing, my dog is about seven pounds. I have concerns on that. And we did have an issue with that. And any kind of clouding about that would make me nervous. I would say, based on that and that report that we've had so far, I can't support this memo as it's written right now. I'd also further point out, from some of the letters that got sent, that we did have a program that was effective on this, the STOP program in downtown, S-T-O-P, which to my understanding from talking to Captain Ali, is not in enforcement or not in place right now, and he was kind of waiting for a memo or a time to bring this up. And I think this is a good time to bring that back up, that we want that STOP program back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Kat Angelou, on behalf of the San Jose Chamber of Commerce, and just apologies, trying to follow some of the back and forth, I was up half the night with my son. But on behalf of our members, I think we are in support of Cohen's recommendation to come back with an implementation plan. It is clear that there is some, I need to come back and clarify, we were appreciative of the memo from Councilmember Campos, and I understand that there are concerns around proactive policing, but we do appreciate the language, and we're in support last week. So we would like to see the intent and the spirit of the municipal code updates move forward. So with that, we will leave you all to see where this lands, I believe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good morning. My name's Tristia Baumann. I am directing attorney of housing at the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. I'm here to support the memo and the call to look more carefully at the ordinances before you, before final approval, specifically to support the memo submitted by Campos, Cohen, Ortiz, and Candelaus. The Law Foundation previously submitted two letters explaining how social science research and the experience of cities around the country over decades have shown that criminalizing unhoused people doesn't end or even reduce the number of people who live on the streets. It won't stop. Calls to any of your offices about people who are living on the streets. But rather than restate what I've put in my letters today, I focus on only this. Our federal and state constitutions protect against many of the harms San Jose's policy shift will cause. First, the trespass ordinance on private property is overly broad and needs more clarity to minimize risk of arbitrary or selective enforcement, which can violate due process protections and federal and state anti-discrimination laws. The memo by Campos and Cohen, Ortiz and Candelaus offer common sense clarification to help mitigate against that risk. The van lording ordinance restricts sheltering in vehicles overnight, every night, and it raises similar due process concerns and may also run afoul of protections against state-created danger, excessive fines, and unreasonable seizures of persons and property. You've referenced the city of LA. You can also learn from the city of San Diego. I was one of many co-counsel who filed a lawsuit against the city of San Diego for their overnight restriction on sheltering in vehicles. And that city agreed ultimately, after the Johnson decision, to a settlement agreement that cost the city $3 million in attorney's fees alone, along with restricting their ability to enforce those ordinances, fine forgiveness, because those were unlawful fines, and expanding the parking locations that actually addressed the problem in the first place. We urge you to take another look. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Angel Aliano with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits and the Real Coalition. We support the memo proposed by Councilmember Campos and others, which would help clarify the ordinance that council approved last week. The ordinance changes that the council approved will exacerbate the homelessness crisis by expanding the grounds on which homeless individuals are breaking the law. As the memo states, a blanket ban of vehicle living is not necessary to prevent van lording. And most importantly, it'll force more people onto the streets and into encampments. This expansion of the municipal code to make living on the streets effectively illegal is a criminalization tactic that will be ineffective in mitigating the homelessness crisis. Citing and arresting is not the solution. This is an opportunity for this council to proactively consider how the ordinance changes from last week will impact unhoused residents. We urge you to support Councilmember Campos's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Maria Ariano. I'm the VP of Permanent Housing at HomeFirst. I appreciate speaking with you today to support the June 13 memo from Councilmembers Campos, Cohen, Ortiz, and Candelaus. HomeFirst is a leading provider of shelter, outreach, and housing services throughout the Bay Area. We support more than 10,000 people each year, many living on the margins, doing their best to survive, and working towards stability with our support. We are deeply concerned about the potential impacts of ordinance 31218 and 31223. As currently written, ordinance 31223 will ban overnight shelters in RVs citywide. For many, a vehicle is the last form of protection from the elements. Losing that shelter increases the risk of illness, trauma, and displacement. It pushes people into unsafe conditions and can unravel months of service engagement. Ordinance 31218, as initially written, will inevitably lead to increased instances of relocation, service disruption, and negative health outcomes, and literal street-based homelessness. Vehicles can offer critical protection during inclement weather. For those with pre-existing medical conditions, exposure to extreme heat, cold, and damp conditions can severely worsen their health and, in some cases, lead to hospitalizations or even death. The negative impact of this ordinance on vulnerable members of our community cannot be overstated. The memo proposes necessarily clarification that reduce harm while still allowing for effective governance. These changes can help ensure our crisis response system remain functional, humane, and focused on long-term outcomes. We urge you to support the recommendations in the memo. Doing so will align San Jose policy with its values and help advance the shared goal of ending homelessness with dignity and care. Thank you for your time.
Back to council.
Thank you. Coming back to the council, we had a motion. Tony, let's vote on the substitute motion from Vice Mayor Foley. Okay.
With Campos voting against.
Okay. Thank you. So we're still in the consent calendar, and we had pulled some items. I believe Councilmember Casey had pulled item 2.32. Councilwoman, should we start with you? You want to jump in?
Please. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. We have some variance in terms of the performance of different sites, and I noticed that in the memo, the Sanitaries of Safe Parking site wasn't extended for a year. So I'd like to make a motion, accept staff recommendation with an amendment to the recommendation A, and limit the contract extension with Life Moves for the Sanitaries of Safe Parking program to a six-month term from July 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025, for an amount of $766,000.
I'll second that motion, or Councilwoman Dewan can second it. Thanks, Councilwoman. I do think, as we go through the process of rebidding these and look at which operators are able to deliver the best results for different populations we're serving, that we might as well align around the same timeframe. I had noticed, and maybe if I could ask a quick follow-up question to Eric, and I'll keep it brief because we're still in, recognize we're still on the consent calendar here. Eric, I noticed a supplemental memo came out. I was very surprised in the original memo to see that for Santa Teresa Safe Parking, which is what Councilwoman Casey's pointing to, there was a very high number quoted initially for exits, and then it was revised. And I'm just curious, do we, are you able to give us a quick sense of the funnel at that site? So I've been really impressed with the early data from Bariessa Safe Parking. Santa Teresa, my sense was we had seen less throughput, but can you just clarify for us what that funnel looks like and how much throughput we're getting?
Yes, so Eric Sullivan, Housing Director. So just to provide some brief, like 10 seconds of context, when we look at safe parking sites within the shelter system, we have to consider sort of two important factors. One is that the slots at each of the sites, so Santa Teresa has 42 slots, it also has 54 people. And when we track individuals going through the system for throughput, we're tracking it on a per capita basis. So there may be instances where there's two people in an RV, one chooses to move on to permanent housing, the other one may stay. So it may not turn the slot, but it turned and increased the success ratio. So the downward adjuster that we made through the supplemental memo was the calculation being done regarding exits. Exits take many forms. Exits can include abandonment, exits can include movements within the system, exits can include exits to permanent housing. And what we adjusted for in the supplemental memo was for that exits to just permanent housing, not exits within the shelter system. Because we have a lot of individuals who just move within the shelter system, from motels, interim housing, and safe parking into interim housing, they're not exiting the system, they're not freeing up a bed, they're just taking another bed and another floor. And so that was the cause and the rationale behind the adjustment in the supplemental.
Okay, got it. And can you just give us a sense of, so the 29.4% of the supplemental, is that the annual rate of throughput? Is that the way to think about it?
Correct.
On a per capita basis or a per parking space basis?
On a per capita basis. So that's the total number of individuals who have moved into permanent housing at the site.
So let me try to restate it. Is it accurate to say that at the Santa Teresa Safe Parking site, 30%, I'm just going to round to an even number here, 29.4% of the people who entered the site in the last 12-month period graduated to permanent housing?
Correct.
Okay. So that is higher than I would have expected. It's lower than we had in the original. You've adjusted the numbers, but actually significantly higher than we see from, say, traditional congregate shelter, for example.
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate the updated memo. I support the, thank you, Eric, I support the motion from Councilwoman Casey to align all of the contracts around the same six-month term as we go out and rebid or make adjustments to many of these. So with that, since we pulled this item and we have a separate motion on it, Tony, do we have public comment on this item?
Yes. Gail, come on down.
Okay.
So I thought this, I'm Gail Osmer. I thought this item was on crisis intervention, giving Santa Teresa, I don't say it's safe parking, because it's not. I have been involved with the Santa Teresa Parking since the beginning for the CAC meetings, and it is a disgrace. We have had four people that died. Four people has died. People are scared to be here to talk, to stand up for themselves because you get kicked out. One person, I got into the RV Safe Parking, was suicidal. He was horribly sad. He went to staff, saying, "Staff, I'm suicidal." What did staff do at Life Moves? Nothing. He hung himself. He hung himself because the staff at Life Moves does not do their job. And I sit here and I listen to people getting into supportive housing. Most of the people that got in, they got in for themselves. I beg you, please do not give them this money. They have no idea what is going on. They come to the CAC meetings, they have not told the truth on many issues. People are scared. You look at Bariessa, happy, happy, happy. You look at Santa Teresa, it's a sad place for people to live. And also, things are going on at Brandon and Monterey, Mayor. That is not good. But please, I'm just begging you, let's look into this money before you give it to. They have no clue about crisis intervention. They've had four people that have died. And how many people have died at Bariessa? None. Look at that program. Look at We Hope. Don't expand this six more months. Let's get We Hope into Bari, into Santa Teresa. Please, let's not give them the money. Thank you so much.
Back to council.
Thank you. Coming back to the council, I don't see any other hands. Let's vote on the motion from Councilwoman Casey.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And then I had just pulled item 2.33 for very brief comment. This is the agreement with the Santa Clara County Housing Authority to receive monthly payments for Pacific Motor Inn. Just wanted to thank Preston Prince, Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Eric Sullivan, our Housing Director, and other key stakeholders, including PATH, who have worked hard to establish this partnership. I think it's a great model and shows what's possible when we work together across different agencies, different stakeholders, and pool our resources, and look forward to this becoming one of our most successful sites. But again, thank you to the Housing Authority for the flexibility and being willing to partner with the city in this way. With that, I'd be happy to entertain a motion for the consent.
I'll move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Great. Do we, and yes, Councilwoman Salas, go ahead.
I just wanted to second what you said. That Pacific Motor Inn is in my district, and I keep wondering why I don't get any complaints. I've done outreach, and it really is, it's too, things have gotten a lot better. We're learning. When they tell you that when these motels and hotels are coming in, if we do them right, they're the right thing to do.
It can be highly effective when we dig in and with the right partners and manage them well. Thank you for that comment, Councilmember. Okay, Tony, do we have a public comment on consent as a whole? How many do we have? Because we will need to recess before we come back at 1:30.
11.
Okay, we're going to have to go to one minute per.
Okay. Marina Siegel, Sandy Gonzalez, Svetlana, Raimi, and... Marina Siegel, Sandy Gonzalez, Svetlana, Rami, and Angie, come on down. Or it might be Anye.
I share a border with District 9. A detailed proposal that I was sent to Senator Casey, District 10, District 9, and District 1 was talking about an amendment that was submitted, directed to this representative to carefully amend existing city blanket approval process to protect both elder care and childcare facilities. It's going to be fully aligned with San Jose goals under the Regional Water Quality Control Board to meet compliance deadlines and avoid substantial fines. I'd like to remind everyone, and Counselmember Casey, clear statement, let's house our homeless neighborhoods, but let's do it safely and thoughtfully. And Vice Mayor Kamau's landmark action last April established a 150-foot non-capable buffer around preschools. Adopting this amendment resonates with both of these statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, Sarah, come on down, and Arsene.
And if folks could be clear on which item they're referring to, it'd be helpful. We do have, it sounded a little bit like that was on item 8.8 later today about motels, but if you just referenced the item you're speaking to, it would help us understand your feedback. But go ahead.
My name is Marina Siegel. Item 2.31. I am a thirty-year resident of Shelley from Campbell. People typically ask me about my accent. I usually answer it's Californian. And it's joke, of course, but it's true. Really, it's true, because I am a part of the big community, across a very tight community on the border, Campbell and San Jose, with different backgrounds, multilingual, different experience. And we all care and tied in our community, and we do care about homeless people, and we glad to see how city, I mean Campbell and San Jose becoming cleaner, because you're doing a great job. But we have a lot of concerns about the way it's done. I want to list my concerns, and certainly first concern, you're kind of violating your own 150 rule buffer for sensitive.
Kate, that's your time? I'd also, I'm sorry, that's your time. Your time is up?
Do I have to say finish?
No. But you can hand me, if you still have your paper, you can hand that to me. JE, come on down. Minoj and Dave Solomon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sandy Gonzalez, a homeowner near Campbell and San Jose border, near the Bristol Hotel. I'm here to express my strong support for the school and elder safety buffer amendment and to respectfully request that you pull item 2.31 from the consent list. First, I wanted to say that I strongly support compassionate solution to homelessness, but compassion must go with thoughtful planning. The conversion of the Bristol Hotel is not a appropriate choice due to the fact that it's 10 feet from the senior care facility, it's 150 feet from a preschool, and it's 0.3 miles from.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Je. I'm actually the homeowner near the Campbell and San Jose. I'm here to request amendment to the item 2.31 concerning the establishment of homeless shelter beds. Specifically, I propose that any shelter beds be located no closer than 150 feet from the property lines of preschool, elementary, middle, or high schools, as well as residential care facilities for the elderly. In incidences where a specific waiver may be considered, I urge that such waivers can only be granted following a public notice hearings and written finding that, one, health and safety protections for vulnerable residents will not be the material impaired; two, no feasible alternative site outside the 150 feet. Ratings exist that allow the city to meet its state mandate housing goals voted by the city councils. This process would ensure that the community concerns are addressed and that the interest of rather than.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Monos Panti, and I am local resident, father, and Bay Area real estate professional. I want to begin by saying I strongly support compassionate solutions to homelessness, but compassion must be paired with thoughtful planning, and that's where this proposal for the Bristol Hotel conversion falls short. The site is less than 150 feet from a preschool and elderly care facility, violating the very buffer standard the city itself considers best practices. These are sensitive, vulnerable spaces. Decisions affect our children, our senior, and our families. Those who often can't speak for themselves, and they are not here, and we are representing them. From a real estate and community value standpoint, the concern is valid and deeply personal. A study by New York University Furman Center found that homes within 500 feet of homeless center sold for 6% to 7% less than similar homes sold.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, council members. My name is Anita, and I'm a resident of District 9. I'm here to support the amendment and would respectfully request that you put the item 2.31 from the agenda for further review. To enhance the effectiveness of this amendment, I urge you to consider several key recommendations, including establish 24/7 security at a shower facility to ensure a safe environment, increase law enforcement patrol around school and senior facilities during peak hours, allocate funding for schools to support additional resource needed during this transition, create a monthly performance dashboard to promote transparency in shelter operations. Vice Mayor Foley, the residents of our community appreciate your leadership on issues that significantly impact our lives. Supporting this amendment demonstrate your commitment to addressing our community's need. It balanced compassion with reasonable safeguard while keeping costs minimal and.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, this is Sarah from Shelley Avenue. I'm here to talk about point, 2.31, that they talk about the Bristol Hotel. I actually have a concern, because this hotel is right at the border of Campbell and San Jose. And it's actually marked as Campbell in Google and Apple Maps, which is wrong, but it's so close. And we had this experience of living across the border. My neighbor found a dead animal recently in our yard, and she called both Campbell and San Jose Department, and they say it's not our business, it's the other city's business. So, I am concerning such homeless shelter may have similar issue when they need medical, emergency, or other services, and which will bring extra difficulty and cost in management of this place. So, I will urge you to consider these and let me know how we could report the.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, council members. My name is Anye, and I'm here to support the school and elder safety buffer amendment to item 2.31. I absolutely recognize the urgency of addressing homelessness in San Jose, but urgency should not override safety. I want to ask, while we are helping one vulnerable group, are we intentionally putting another at risk? Can we really say we are acting responsibly if we place shelter directly next to preschools or elder care homes? The amendment proposed a simple reasonable buffer between new shelter sites and sensitive places like school and senior facilities. It doesn't ban shelter development, it doesn't tie the city's hands. It's not about opposing shelters, it's about doing this in a balanced, thoughtful way. Children and seniors don't have a voice in public decisions like this, but they rely on us to protect their environment, whether that's a classroom or care home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Svetlana, and I'm a resident of San Jose and a citizen who deeply values our democratic principles, especially their responsibility to protect all members of our community, including our elders, children, and those experiencing homelessness. I'm asking you to pull item 2.31 from the agenda for further review and to add an addendum that would prohibit the use of hotels for transitional housing if they are within 200 feet of elder care or children or childcare facilities. And I'm talking about Bristol Hotel is located directly next to a senior care facility. I've spoke with some of the residents there, many are elderly, sick, and vulnerable. They're deeply anxious and frightened by the thought of unfamiliar people coming and going outside their windows day and night. Several told me they don't feel safe alone.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello, everybody. My name is Arsene. I live across the street from the Bristol Hotel, as many of my neighbors and fellow citizens have mentioned. I'll keep this brief. The blanket approval for the 2.31 section within your proposal really goes against some of our moral fabrics that we have within our voting rights and the ability to be able to proudly select where our vulnerable population is going to be heading into. Now, in this particular situation, the hotel for the conversion of the Bristol Hotel is going to be within 43 feet, actually 45 feet, of a senior center. And I repeat, 45 feet of a senior center and 157 feet of a preschool. Now, once this is approved, is the City of San Jose going to respond to this? Is the City of Fire going to respond to this? Is the medical going to respond? Last time I made a call to the San Jose Police Department, it took four and a half hours.
Back to counsel.
All right. We will, we will come back to the counsel. I'll turn to the Vice Mayor before we vote on the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not pulling this item, and I'm not planning to offer amendment, but I do want to make a comment. Last week, last Wednesday night, we had a community meeting, a very large community meeting with over 300 people present to discuss the conversion of Bristol Hotel, which we will be discussing much later in an item towards the end of the agenda. So, I won't go into detail all of my comments, but I want to acknowledge the crowd, really, that was very concerned about moving mothers and their children into this facility or senior women. I want to emphasize that point. Senior women 60 years or above, or mothers and their children. The reason Bristol Hotel is a perfect hotel for, location for children, is it's very close to a very good elementary school farnum, and these children ought to be able to benefit from a good education, good public school education. So, I support the Bristol Hotel and the directions we're going on that. I also want to say that after the community meeting, while we heard a lot of people very concerned, mostly Campbell residents, I have to say, because this, as mentioned, this property is right next door to Campbell. But we did hear the next day a tremendous outpouring of support from people who want to get involved, who want to make the, help make the residents who are living there that a successful opportunity, creating a community advisory committee. We have, we're collecting a lot of people who are showing that tremendous outpouring that they want to help these women become successful as they go forward. That's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Appreciate your leadership on this issue. Obviously, not easy to end on sheltered homelessness, but we're all trying really hard to bring forward solutions and manage them effectively with all of the stakeholders involved. So, more on that. We'll have more discussion on item 8.8 later today. With that, we do have a motion on the rest of consent. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So, it is 1:01. We have agendized some items to not start until 1:30. We have quite a bit left. We're going to take a 30-minute recess approximately, and then we'll continue.[1483.19] We're going to take a 30-minute recess approximately and then we'll continue.
All right, colleagues. We are coming back from our recess. Toni, do you need to call the roll again?
I just want to note that all are present except for Campos.
Okay. I see Councilmember, Councilwoman Campos is here.
All are present.
She's on her way back. So all are present from before, minus the absence of Councilwoman Candela's due to illness. We're on to item one. We will now recess the regular city council meeting and convene the joint City of San Jose City Council Financing Authority, which will also be heard concurrently with item 3.5, City of San Jose General Obligation Bonds, Series 2025, but voted on separately. And we'll start with the staff presentation on item one.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, staff, and the public. I am Maria Oberg. I am the Director of Finance. And with me is Chin Yu Sun, our Deputy Director of Finance, Overtrussory, and Debt Management. We also, while we wait for the presentation to load, we have members from our Bond Council and our Municipal Advisor in chambers, in case you have questions for them. I also would be very remiss if I didn't take this time to really thank them for their hard work. We really appreciate their partnership in getting these two deals over the goal line. So before you, we have a combined presentation of both series of bonds, the Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2025A, and the General Obligation Bonds, Series 2025ABC. Can I have the presentation? Thank you. Thank you. So for the Lease Revenue Bonds, we are looking for authorization to issue up to $53 million of Series 2025A bonds. This will repay our $20.7 million of commercial paper that we issued a while ago for the Muni Water Building, and also provide $11.3 million of new money to finish up that project, if the market allows, and that's an if at this point. We are also looking at refunding $20.7 million of our outstanding Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2013B, that are associated with the Civic Center Garage. As you know, in Lease Revenue Bonds, we have to have a property to pledge for the bond financing. So if we are able to refund the 2013B bonds, we would put the Civic Center Garage and the Muni Water Building as collateral for these bonds, and then release the Civic Center Garage when the Muni Water Building is certified for use and occupancy. If we cannot refund the 2013B bonds, then we will replace the Civic Center Garage and instead put the Animal Shelter and Fire Station 1 together with the Muni Water Building, and then drop the Animal Shelter and the Fire Station Number 1 when the Muni Water Building is certified for use and occupancy. The indenture for these bonds allows substitution of assets and also additional bonds. Again, in both cases, we need to make sure that the properties we pledge are at least equal to the par amount of bonds outstanding. And because of our good credit rating, we are not securing these bonds with a reserve account. The GEO Bonds Measure T, as you know, this was voter-approved in November 2018 for $650 million. This was for a variety of infrastructure needs. We have issued $440.43 million already. $421.4 million of those have been expended, and so we are looking to issue the final $209.6 million of bonds. These will be used for several Measure T projects. There is money set aside for bridges and pavement maintenance, for public safety projects, for storm and sewer, as well as for park and community facilities, some of which can be used for emergency shelters. And as you know, we are very proud to be one of the highest-rated large cities in the nation. We held rating presentations yesterday and last Friday, and we are hopeful that they will affirm our current ratings with stable outlooks. So this is the key takeaway for you elected officials today, the importance of disclosure when we issue debt. Issuers of municipal securities have an obligation to ensure that information contained in the disclosure document is accurate and complete in all material respects. Proper disclosure allows investors to understand and evaluate the financial health of the local municipality in which they invest. There are several codes that talk about the severity of fraud. The most important for you, I think, at this time is SEC Rule 10B5, which prohibits the making of any untrue statement of material fact or omitting to state a material fact in the offer or sale of securities. A fact is considered material if there is substantial likelihood that its disclosure would be considered significant by a reasonable investor. So the official statements provide material information to help a reasonable investor decide whether or not to buy or sell our bonds. Appendix A talks mostly about the financial, economic, and demographic information about the city. Appendix B details the information about our two retirement plans. And Appendix E is our continuing disclosure certificate for 2025 bonds. You are not expected to be fact-checkers. However, after you review the documents, you need to consider the following elements. Have identified material risks and events been brought to the attention of staff, Bond Council, or other professionals? Have risks and events been disclosed? And if not, what is the rationale for the non-disclosure? If any council member or authority board member has any personal knowledge that any of the material information in the official statement is or may be false or misleading, or that material information has been omitted, you must raise these issues prior to the approval of the distribution of the documents. And of course, approval of bond documents and preliminary official statement is consistent with good disclosure practices. This slide is just a very quick update on the financing schedule. We are looking to post the POS, that's the Preliminary Official Statement, for the GEO Bonds on June 25th, with a pricing on July 8th. We are looking to post the Lease Revenue Bond POS on July 28th and price those bonds on August 12th. And with that, I have recommendations for the Financing Authority agenda, which is to conduct a public hearing approving issuance of 2025A bonds for the public improvements of the Muni Water Building project. Also, to adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the issuance and sale by the Authority for Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2025A, in the principal amount not to exceed $53 million, to finance and refinance certain public capital improvements of the city, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of a site lease, a lease agreement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and also authorizing the distribution of an official statement in connection with the offering and sale of such bonds, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates and related actions. Under both the Debt Management Policy and the San Jose Municipal Code, approval of the issuance of Lease Revenue Bonds requires a two-thirds vote by the city council. And I also have the recommendation for Council Agenda Item 3.5. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $209,570,000, authorizing and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement and continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the distribution of an official statement in connection with the offering of such bonds, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates and related actions. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you both. Toni, let's start with any public comment on item one or item 3.5.
I have no cards for these items.
Okay. We will come back to the council then. And council members, we can discuss or ask questions on either item, but I will ask for separate motions, please. Starting with item one, if anyone would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve item one.
Okay. Great. Toni, let's vote on item one.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. And then on item 3.5, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Toni, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular city council meeting. We are on to item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And thank you, Nora, for straightening me out there. Okay. So we are then on to item 3.6. This is the approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes and loan of the proceeds thereof for the financing of the 525 North Capital Development and other related documents.
Thank you very much, Senator.
And then on item 3.7, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Toni, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular city council meeting. We are on to item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And thank you, Nora, for straightening me out there. Okay. So we are then on to item 3.6. This is the approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes and loan of the proceeds thereof for the financing of the 525 North Capital Development and other related documents.
Thank you very much, Senator.
And then on item 3.7, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Toni, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular city council meeting. We are on to item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And then on item 3.8, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Toni, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular city council meeting. We are on to item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And then on item 3.8, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second. Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Toni, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular city council meeting. We are on to item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And thank you, Nora, for straightening me out there. Okay. So we are then on to item 3.6. This is the approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes and loan of the proceeds thereof for the financing of the 525 North Capital Development and other related documents. I am Maria Oberg. I am the Director of Finance. And with me is Chin Yu Sun, our Deputy Director of Finance over Truchery and Debt Management. We also, while we wait for the presentation to load, we have members from our Bond Council and our Municipal Advisor in Chambers, in case you have questions for them. I also would be very remiss if I didn't take this time to really thank them for their hard work. We really appreciate their partnership in getting these two deals over the goal line. So before you, we have a combined presentation of both series of bonds. The Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2025A, and the General Obligation Bonds, Series 2025A, B, and C. Can I have the presentation? Thank you. Thank you. So for the Lease Revenue Bonds, we are looking for authorization to issue up to $53 million of Series 2025A bonds. This will repay our $20.7 million of commercial paper that we issued a while ago for the Muni Water Building, and also provide $11.3 million of new money to finish up that project, if the market allows, and that's an if at this point. We are also looking at refunding $20.7 million of our outstanding Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2013B, that are associated with the Civic Center Garage. As you know, in Lease Revenue Bonds, we have to have a property to pledge for the bond financing. So if we are able to refund the 2013B bonds, we would put the Civic Center Garage and the Muni Water Building as collateral for these bonds, and then release the Civic Center Garage when the Muni Water Building is certified for use and occupancy. If we cannot refund the 2013B bonds, then we will replace the Civic Center Garage and instead put the Animal Shelter and Fire Station 1, together with the Muni Water Building, and then drop the Animal Shelter and the Fire Station Number 1 when the Muni Water Building is certified for use and occupancy. The indenture for these bonds allows substitution of assets and also additional bonds. Again, in both cases, we need to make sure that the properties we pledge are at least equal to the par amount of bonds outstanding. And because of our good credit rating, we are not securing these bonds with a reserve account. The GEO Bonds Measure T, as you know, this was voter-approved in November 2018 for $650 million. This was for a variety of infrastructure needs. We have issued $440.43 million already. $421.4 million of those have been expended, and so we are looking to issue the final $209.6 million of bonds. These will be used for several Measure T projects. There is money set aside for bridges and pavement maintenance, for public safety projects, for storm and sewer, as well as for park and community facilities, some of which can be used for emergency shelters. And as you know, we are very proud to be one of the highest-rated large cities in the nation. We held rating presentations yesterday and last Friday, and we are hopeful that they will affirm our current ratings with stable outlooks. So this is the key takeaway for you elected officials today, the importance of disclosure when we issue debt. Issuers of municipal securities have an obligation to ensure that information contained in the disclosure document is accurate and complete in all material respects. Proper disclosure allows investors to understand and evaluate the financial health of the local municipality in which they invest. There are several codes that talk about the severity of fraud. The most important for you, I think, at this time is SEC Rule 10B5, which prohibits the making of any untrue statement of material fact or omitting to state a material fact in the offer or sale of securities. A fact is considered material if there is substantial likelihood that its disclosure would be considered significant by a reasonable investor. So the official statements provide material information to help a reasonable investor decide whether or not to buy or sell our bonds. Appendix A talks mostly about the financial, economic, and demographic information about the city. Appendix B details the information about our two retirement plans. And Appendix E is our continuing disclosure certificate for 2025 bonds. You are not expected to be fact-checkers, however, after you review the documents, you need to consider the following elements. Have identified material risks and events been brought to the attention of staff, Bond Council, or other professionals? Have risks and events been disclosed? And if not, what is the rationale for the non-disclosure? If any council member or authority board member has any personal knowledge that any of the material information in the official statement is or may be false or misleading, or that material information has been omitted, you must raise these issues prior to the approval of the distribution of the documents. And of course, approval of bond documents and preliminary official statement is consistent with good disclosure practices. This slide is just a very quick update on the financing schedule. We are looking to post the POS, that's the Preliminary Official Statement, for the GEO Bonds on June 25th, with a pricing on July 8th. We are looking to post the Lease Revenue Bond POS on July 28th and price those bonds on August 12th. And with that, I have recommendations for the Financing Authority Agenda, which is to conduct a public hearing approving issuance of 2025A bonds for the public improvements of the Muni Water Building project. Also, to adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the issuance and sale by the Authority for Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2025A, in the principal amount not to exceed $53 million to finance and refinance certain public capital improvements of the city. Approving and authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of a site lease, a lease agreement, a continuing disclosure certificate, and also authorizing the distribution of an official statement in connection with the offering and sale of such bonds, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and certificates and related actions. Under both the Debt Management Policy and the San Jose Municipal Code, approval of the issuance of Lease Revenue Bonds requires a two-thirds vote by the City Council. And I also have the recommendation for Council Agenda Item 3.5. It is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $209,570,000, authorizing and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement and continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the distribution of an official statement in connection with the offering of such bonds, and authorizing the execution of necessary documents, certificates, and related actions. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you both. Tony, let's start with any public comment on Item 1 or Item 3.5.
I have no cards for these items.
Okay. We will come back to the council then. And council members, we can discuss or ask questions on either item, but I will ask for separate motions, please. Starting with Item 1, if anyone would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve Item 1.
Okay. Tony, let's vote on Item 1.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then on Item 3.5, again, discussion.
I'll move approval of the authorization of issuing the bonds.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands, assuming there's no further discussion or questions. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So we will now adjourn the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency of the City of San Jose and return to the regular City Council meeting. We are on to Item 3.1. If you have one, if you have an update, Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I do not have an update today.
And I'm sorry, I meant to say we were adjourning the Financing Authority. I seem to have the wrong thing on my notes, but, sorry, did you say you had any report?
I did not have a report today. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you. And thank you, Nora, for straightening me out there. Okay, so we are then on to Item 3.6. This is the approval of the issuance of multifamily housing revenue notes and loan of the proceeds thereof for the financing of the 525 North Capital Development and other related documents. I don't believe there's a staff presentation. Tony, do we have public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay, coming back to the council. Colleagues, this is 3.6.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Let's vote on the motion from Council
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to Item 3.7. This is the Public Hearing on Recording Leans on Properties for the Reimbursement of the Cost of Sidewalk Repairs to be placed on the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Santa Clara County Secured Property Tax Bill. And once again, we have a staff presentation, so we'll start with that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, staff and public, again, I'm Maria Oberg. I am the Director of Finance. I am here today with John Risto, Director for the Department of Transportation, and John Kishmanian, Deputy Director of Finance over Revenue Management. The lien action before you today is the last step to recover costs that the city has paid with general fund dollars to perform sidewalk repairs. Staff in the Department of Transportation and Finance Department work diligently to provide property owners with information about the Financial Hardship Program and alternative payment arrangements to avoid this lien process. In the two months following the April 15th public hearing, the number of properties subject to lien has decreased from 111 to 82. Most property owners paid in full, but others took advantage of payment plans or the Financial Hardship Program. Now, turn the presentation over to John.
Thank you, Maria. John Risto, Director of Transportation. On this slide, provides some examples, if you can see them, of the types of sidewalk imperfections that we're out in doing inspections on. I'll just go through that very quickly. We're looking for safety of the sidewalk for walking public, and so when we are out and we are made aware of potential problems with the sidewalk, our inspectors go out to see what is the issue. We're looking for vertical separations. You can see that on the left side photo. Also, ramping of the sidewalk that may have been impacted by a tree, other holes or openings within the sidewalk that may be unsafe for walking, and then also breaking away of the concrete or spalling. We look at both the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, driveway ramps, and everything that would possibly have pedestrians walking on, to make sure that they are adequate for walking and safe. We look at, make sure that those areas are safe for all types of users. I also want to point out that the State Motor Vico Code and our own municipal ordinance does put the responsibility for the repair of those facilities with the adjacent property owner. And we actually respond to, most often is responding to people that may have been walking or living in the area, and they will report an imperfection in the sidewalk, and then we send inspectors out. Most of the time, it is done on a reactive basis, but however, in some cases, we will actually see imperfection in the sidewalk and then take action on those as well. The vast majority of sidewalk repair is actually completed by the property owner. We do over 5,000 sidewalk repairs a year, and almost 70% of those are actually done by the property owners using their own contractors, which is usually faster and cheaper and easier. For those folks that don't want to use their own contractors, that's where we come in. We will use our own contractors and complete the work, and then we bill the property owners for that work to recover those costs. When they do not pay it, that's why we're here, to recover those costs with the lien that would be placed on the property. For property owners that may need it, we also offer a hardship program, and it's outlined there on the slide. I'm not going to go into details on that, but we usually do use that entire amount that's been allocated by the council every year to assist homeowners in their completion of sidewalk repairs. And I'm going to turn it back over to John right now.
Thank you, John. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. John Kishmanian, Deputy Director of Finance, Revenue Management. This slide goes into more detail about the typical sidewalk lien process and schedule. The lien spans one year from August to August. Between August and October, the city issues three repair notices, conducts outreach about the sidewalk repair financial hardship program, and performs sidewalk repairs. Between November and March, the Department of Transportation issues sidewalk repair invoices and coordinates with finance to send up to three late notices for unpaid invoices. The lien process commenced in March, leading to council's April 15th approval to set a lien public hearing date of June 17th. In April, the Department of Transportation sent two notices of intent to lien and held administrative conferences in May for delinquent property owners. Upon conclusion of today's public hearing and following council's approval of staff's recommendations, a special assessment would be placed on the property tax bill of delinquent property owners to recover sidewalk repair costs. On April 15th, City Council approved a memorandum which set a June 17th public hearing date to recover unpaid sidewalk repair expenses by recording liens. On April 22nd and again on April 29th, the Department of Transportation mailed notices to property owners who were in default of paying for their sidewalk repairs. These notices contain information on the May 6th and 7th administrative conferences, which provided an opportunity for property owners to discuss their delinquent balances. In addition, the notices announced a scheduled June 17th public hearing date to record liens on any property owners with remaining unpaid balances. Here's a heat map of San Jose by district showing the delinquent sidewalk repair invoices with pending liens. As of May 8th, these invoices had an average balance of $3,000, an average age of 18 months, and a total outstanding balance of approximately $307,000. In conclusion, staff recommends that council conduct a public hearing on recording liens on properties for the reimbursement of the cost of sidewalk repairs, adopt a resolution confirming the report from the Director of Finance concerning the delinquent sidewalk repair costs and the assessments contained in the report, and direct the recording of liens and the placement of charges as set forth therein on the 2025-2026 Santa Clara County Secured Property Tax Bill for the cost of sidewalk repairs. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff presentation. Tony, do we have public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
No cards. Okay. So this is Item 3.7. We'll come back to the council.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go on to Item 3.8, colleagues, I apologize. I was, I think inadvertently given the wrong script, so we will need to go back to Item 1 and Item 3.5 again, or at least, or just Item 1.
Thank you, Mayor. Just Item 1 for the City of San Jose and the City of San Jose Financing Authority hearing.
Okay. And I have a, I now have a printed copy of the correct script. Okay, so I apologize. We will go back through and then revote.
Yes, on Item 1.
Okay, just to make sure, on Item 1 specifically. So we're back to Item 1.
Right, and the, and the purpose of going back to it is to just formally open and formally close a public hearing.
Okay. Well, once again, good afternoon. The City of San Jose will hear and consider information and public testimony concerning a possible lease financing and refinancing by the City of San Jose Financing Authority and the city to fund public capital improvements consisting of a parking garage owned and operated by the city, and an administration and operations building and related improvements for the city's Water Resources Division. This hearing is the opportunity for all interested persons to speak or submit written comments about the proposal to issue lease revenue bonds and the improvements to be financed and refinanced. Would anyone like to submit any written comments? I'm not seeing anyone come forward.
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay, and Tony, you don't have any written comment cards either, I see.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. This hearing is now adjourned. We will now consider a motion on Item 1. Okay, motion to approve from Councilwoman Dwan. I heard a second from Casey. Thank you. Just make sure there are no other hands up. There are not. Tony, let's vote once again on Item 1.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all for your pa- Okay. So we're back now to, we're on Item 3.8. This is the reappointment of the city auditor. Put forward a memo to reappoint Joe Royce as our city auditor. Tony, do we have any public comment on Item 3.8?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay. We come back to the council. Councilmember Kameh.
I just want to thank the city auditor and his team. You have a great team, and, you know, you've been very, very open to whenever we have a question, reach out to you, and I always enjoy having those sessions to be able to review the different audits. The one-on-one sessions are also very helpful. So I just want to say thank you, and I want to thank your team, because your team does a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of research, and the thoroughness really shows in your work. So I'm delighted to go ahead and move this and reappoint the city auditor.
Second.
Great. Thank you. And I'll just say, Joe, thank you for your service, the high quality of work you and your team do. I was happy to bring forward a recommendation to reappoint you, because your work has been just stellar and has really helped give us insight into how we can improve, from a policy or operational perspective, how we can all do, do more for our residents with our limited resources. And I've always found you to be extremely responsive, detail-oriented, and all the things we would, we would expect and want from a city auditor. So thank you for your service, and I appreciate my colleague's support for my recommendation to reappoint Joe Royce as our city auditor. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations, Joe, to you and your team, and thank you, colleagues. Okay, we are on to Item 3.9, Tovar v. City of San Jose et al. Settlement Agreement. Tony, do we have public comment, or, I'm sorry, city, we didn't have a presentation, correct?
Correct, we do not. We have the public memo that's been posted.
Great. Thank you. Tony, did we have public comment?
We have no cards for this item.
Okay, coming back to the council on Item 3.9. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Motion from Councilmember Ortiz. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to Item 4.1. This is the 2024 Independent Police Auditor Year End Report. We'll wait for our independent police auditor, Eddie Aubrey, to come down to the box and begin the presentation. All right, Eddie, are we ready to jump in?
All right, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city leadership, and members of the San Jose community. My name is Eddie Aubrey, your independent police auditor. I am honored to present our 2024 Year End Report. Before I begin, I'd like to briefly reintroduce myself and highlight my subject matter expertise from law enforcement and as a civilian oversight leader. I bring over 45 years of experience. I bring over 45 years of experience in law enforcement, prosecution, and the judiciary, and civilian oversight. I served as a police officer for 15 years with the Santa Monica and Los Angeles Police Departments, a chief prosecuting attorney, a director of public safety for a college, and a judge pro temp. For over eight years, I led internal affairs investigations of officer-involved shootings and misconduct cases as a civilian within the Richmond Police Department. I directed oversight in Fresno, where I led reviews of officer-involved shootings and officer misconduct cases. I am also a certified practitioner in civilian oversight. Our assistant IPA Dwight White brings similar experience, having investigated officer-involved shootings in Chicago and Sacramento as a civilian, and he is also an attorney. But before we begin, we pause to honor three individuals whose legacies of service deeply impacted our city. Reverend Jeff Moore, a fierce advocate for social justice; Victor Garza, a champion of equity and education; and Long Pham, a dedicated police department community service officer who died in the line of duty. We remember them with gratitude and respect. Our mission is simple. Our mission is simple yet profound: to provide independent oversight of police misconduct investigations and make policy recommendations rooted in fairness. Our vision is to become a national model of civilian oversight grounded in transparency, community-centered engagement, and public trust. 2024 was a year of rebuilding, literally and figuratively. We stabilized operations, refocused priorities, and began restoring essential community and departmental relationships. This dashboard shows a snapshot of our work, but we understand that behind every number is a real person. Every case we review represents a story, a concern, or a potential systemic issue, and that's why oversight matters. There were 373 complaints, which was a 17% increase from 2023, that had 320 complaints. We audited 282 cases, participated in 165 officer interviews, and audited 298 officers. Most significantly, 944 allegations were closed, resulting in 157 sustained allegations of misconduct, which is a 14% sustain rate. It should be noted that 69% of the findings determined there were no police misconduct. Here is a few cases that demonstrate the power of oversight. One case, we added an allegation and requested to reopen an internal affairs investigation into a wrongful arrest. This led to four sustained findings against three officers that would have been missed without independent oversight. Another case, an officer made a racially inappropriate comment at training which was found not sustained. After our announce- comment at training which was found not sustained. After our analysis, we requested it to be reopened. The not sustained finding was withdrawn, and a corrective action was taken. Another case is that we appealed a case from command staff supervisors who exonerated officers involved in unlawful detention and search. After appeal, the chief of police agreed and changed the findings from exonerated to sustained. I'm going to skip this slide because that's a little repetitive there. Complaint allegations fell into several categories, with the procedural violations being the highest, followed by Fourth Amendment, then discourtesy, while bias-based policing actions was the last major category. This complaint, this shows complaints by experience. Officers with zero to four years of experience represent the highest group with 31.5% of the complaints. Even more telling is that 55% of sustained allegations came from officers with just two to four years of experience. So enhanced mentorship during these years could significantly reduce misconduct. For example, after officers complete their one-year probation, assigning them to work with an experienced officer for six to 12 months could reduce the high percentage of sustain rates while improving the officer's expertise and improved community relations. There were two types of complaints: those filed by community members and those initiated by the department itself. As indicated before, there were 373 community complaints with a 14% sustain rate, while the department-initiated complaints numbered 41 with a significantly higher 67% sustain rate. The high sustain rate indicates that the police department is proactively identifying and addressing misconduct within the police department. The overall sustain rate was 17%. When misconduct is found, appropriate discipline or corrective action follows. There were 102 total actions taken. Training and counseling represented 45 actions. The most serious discipline included 57 actions of written reprimands, suspensions, or separations from the San Jose Police Department. Our 12 recommendations are organized in three strategic categories. On the left side shows oversight and access. Those recommendations consist of establish a formal memorandum of agreement between the IPA and Internal Affairs, expand early access to officer-involved shooting materials, classify critical incidents as department-initiated investigations, and expand our authority to review all use-of-force incidents, not just great bodily injury cases. In the center has operations and policies. Those recommendations consist of update the duty manual to reflect serious misconduct categories that would lead towards officer decertification, improve interview practices, clarify off-duty vehicle policies, and prohibit disabling department technologies such as GPS on department vehicles. On the right side, it has accountability and transparency. The recommendations include require use and possession of department cellphones while officers are working, define minor transgression, provide written instructions after search warrants have been served or property was damaged, and affirm our real-time auditing practice. I will discuss recommendations only from the oversight and access portion. Recommendation number one, this establishes a formal memorandum of agreement between our office and Internal Affairs. A formal MOA would establish clear rules of engagement, shared expectations, and stronger working relationships. Recommendation number two is expanding, we recommend expanding timely officer access to officer-involved shootings. Currently, the IPA immediately responds to officer-involved shootings 24/7. Upon arrival, we receive information about the shootings from IA and then leave the scene while the investigation continues. At the scene, Internal Affairs participates in a walkthrough of the scene, attends briefings, reviews body-worn cameras, and listens or observes interviews of the shooting officers immediately. We are excluded from this access or receiving further information at that time. The next time we receive information is usually two or three months later at the police department briefing. At that point, we are reviewing the case months after Internal Affairs has had this information from day one. What we are requesting is simple. One, join the walkthrough group at the scene. Two, receive the same on-scene and formal briefings as Internal Affairs. Three, receive body-worn camera recordings immediately after the incident. Four, observe or listen to officer interviews immediately after the incident. Five, receive timely access to incident-related reports. This request is not extraordinary. It's what other oversight agencies across California already do. City Charter states that we shall have access to records related to officer-involved shootings, but the department may withhold access until investigations are concluded. "May" is discretionary, not mandatory. The roadblock is not legal. It's about policy. Lastly, as to confidentiality, we are subject to similar confidentiality requirements as the police department and are also governed by attorney ethic rules with real consequences for violations equal or stricter than police standards. To be clear, this recommendation does not create new authority. It simply ensures we can fulfill our existing duties in real time, not two to three months later. Unlike many of our counterparts across California, we do not have timely access to key elements of a shooting investigation. In contrast, oversight agencies in cities such as San Francisco, Oakland, Sacramento, Fresno, Long Beach, and BART, all similarly sized or nearby, do have this access. I focus on these peer cities because they reflect a more appropriate comparison to San Jose than large metropolitan agencies like Los Angeles or New York, who also have this same access. More importantly, access is provided immediately while the criminal investigation is in progress. Not delayed until weeks or months later. This isn't an outlier practice. It is standard, lawful, and a proven practice. These agencies demonstrate that meaningful oversight and sound criminal investigations are not mutually exclusive. They show that where there's a will, there's a way, and these cities have shown how to do both responsibly and legally. These agencies highlight that allowing oversight at the crime scene or providing immediate access to information does not compromise the integrity of the criminal investigation or its evidence. Moreover, the IPA, me, and my assistant IPA, who responds to the officer-involved shootings, we are trained and experienced crime scene investigators and have responded to numerous officer-involved shootings in our careers outside of this agency. I was at Fresno, which is one of the cities on the chart, and Richmond, and Dwight was at Sacramento, one of the cities on the chart, and Chicago. So we know how to do this. We are not asking for special treatment. We are asking for parity, parity with our peers, parity with established best practices, and parity with what oversight increasingly looks like across northern California. It ensures that we are informed, effective, and transparent in the moments when it matters most. Those situations are immediately after the use of deadly force. And so, without that access, it raises a very reasonable question. What purpose does it serve for the IPA to respond to the scene if we are not permitted to observe, obtain, or access any information that we couldn't receive with a phone call? Recommendation number three, we recommend classifying officer-involved shootings in custody deaths and civil lawsuits as department-initiated investigations. Classifying them as DIIs, as what it's known as, ensures timely, transparent audits that boost accountability, protect due process, reduce liability, and build public trust. This flowchart illustrates the problem and our solution. The proposed solution, which is at the bottom, brings all critical incidents under structured department-initiated investigation classification, ensuring consistent procedure for all investigations, standardized oversight and accountability measures, and comprehensive reporting and transparency. Recommendation number 11, we recommend affirming the continued use of real-time auditing as an IPA practice. This wasn't in one of the categories, but I did add it to this presentation. By acknowledging that real-time auditing is working, the police department signals to all stakeholders that collaborative, that collaboration through partnership, ensuring equity for all, is not only possible, it's preferable. Real-time auditing is an approach that has proven more effective than traditional after-the-fact auditing. It allows us to identify issues early and ensure investigations are thorough from the start. Finally, we recommend expanding our authority to review all use-of-force cases, incidents that are not just the most serious ones, classified as great bodily injuries from Measure G. Independent review of all levels of force, especially lower-level force, which occurs far more often, ensures consistent oversight and early detection of problematic patterns. In fact, we only reviewed 2% to 3% of use-of-force cases under the great bodily injury analysis, and the remaining 97% to 98% goes without civilian oversight analysis. The broader scope would strengthen accountability, improve officer support systems, reinforce constitutional policing practice, and build public confidence in law enforcement. Currently, our staff, currently, our access to the rest of the use-of-force incident is limited to statistical data, just the numbers. But as we know, numbers don't tell the full story. We do not receive the reports, body-worn cameras, body-worn camera recordings, or other key information that tells us the full story. For example, what escalated the force? What de-escalation tactics were used? The sequence of force used? What force was effective or ineffective? Whether alternative force options were considered, et cetera? With our current staffing, there are many things we can do now to benefit the community and the police department, such as conduct a broad-brush overview of critical factors, conduct an in-depth review of a certain percentage of cases, and an in-depth review or only review all EFRC cases from the police department. As described in our strategic plan with added staff, we can complete a fuller analysis. I then want to note one update. In the left-hand corner, it says 424 total use-of-force cases. We determined last week there were actually 569 use-of-force cases. So the updated numbers indicate the use-of-force incidents increased slightly by 3.8% from 548 in 2023 to 569 in 2024. There were a total of 13 GBIs out of 569. So, incidents, there were five officer-involved shootings, four K9 incidents, and four GBI incidents. These cases show all subjects were fleeing or resisting, and all force was deemed reasonable. However, we identified some concerning patterns. One, canines were the most common factor in serious injuries, four out of seven. Two, head and face strikes occurred in three of seven cases that resulted in GBI. We suggest San Jose PD consider reviewing their K9 deployment procedures and minimize the use of head and face strikes to incidents where it is necessary to protect life or great bodily injury. There were five officer-involved shootings in 2024. Four subjects had firearms, and three subjects fired at officers first. The key findings from that is 100% of subjects displayed threatening behavior before shots were fired. Two, 80% of officers fired their firearms after being shot at or while being attacked with a knife. One incident involved potential mental health factors highlighting the need for crisis intervention resources. There were a number of accomplishments here. I'll just let you read that. One I did want to highlight is the bottom one. We had a high school intern, first time we've ever had that, Eduardo from Cristo Rey. So it was very, very happy, and he's happy to join us next, this coming year if possible. Community engagement. In this slide, it shows that we engage in 6,917 community members, and we engage with those members, in all districts, with the highest being in District 3 and District 5. Strategic plan. So this is a strategic plan that we've developed. We've developed a three-year strategic plan to accomplish our goals, and I don't think that's ever been done in the IPA's office as far as looking at a strategic plan and trying to plan that out. So we have four pillars on the screen there, and I think they're pretty self-explanatory. In conclusion, thank you for your attention and your support throughout this rebuilding year. I'm excited to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great. Does that conclude the staff presentation? Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if Chief had anything to add.
And yeah, it doesn't conclude it because we actually combined my presentation with the DII presentation that's normally given by the police department.
Perfect. Okay, great. Tony, let's go to public comment first.
I have no cards for this item.
No cards, okay. Then we will come back to the council then. Start with Councilmember Kameh.
Thank you so much. And first and foremost, I really want to start by acknowledging the work of the IPA and really thank Eddie and his team for really, you know, a tremendous year of rebuilding. And you said it very well, that a lot has happened in terms of all of the work and, you know, everything that has occurred over time. And I want to thank you personally because I think that your expertise and leadership in the IPA office really has set the tone of integrity. And, you know, I think that the community also has appreciated your outreach. I know that many times I found you in different events or your staff, and that means a lot because you are in community. So I want to say thank you for your first year of really rebuilding that. I'm very impressed about the strategic plan because it gives you a roadmap as to where you want to go in the future, and that has been quite, quite good to even have, right? You know, sometimes you think, well, you know, I wonder why they didn't do it before, but I think that over time, there's been a lot of different issues. And thank you for your professionalism. I want to acknowledge my Brown Act group that worked on putting some thoughts together. I'd like to thank the Chief on his responses. And, you know, I think that in our memo, we agree with accepting 10 out of the 12 recommendations in the report. I think that over time, we, you know, can see sort of with your strategic plan how we can continue to incorporate and the community in this work. So at this time, I think that I'd like to say that, you know, accountability, transparency, and oversight is essential, and I think we all feel that way, not just for trust in law enforcement, but for the health of our society, and we need institutions that reflect that. So thank you. Thank you for a great first year. And I'd like to move the memo from the mayor, myself, Councilmember Salas-Mokehi, and I'd also like to include Councilmember Bien's memo as well and move that forward.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me turn now to Councilman Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the police department. You guys are the best department in California, even in the nation for that matter. And I want to thank you, Eddie, for bringing out a lot of these concerns and possible correction. As we learn how to collaborate and work together, we can find a lot of solutions that support our residents. All that said and done, I have a, I don't have any question. I just have comments. Last night, I literally stayed up all night, and I thought about this. And when I stay up all night and think about a particular issue, it's heartening, it's concerning. Why, I really appreciate that Councilmember Kamay including my memorandum. But let me paint a picture for you, what is politics, right? Even though my light was flashing first, I know the mayor got the privilege to put Kamay on, but rightly should go on to the order. Two, recently, I authorized a memorandum with thoughtful, policy-driven recommendation that encapsulate the desire of our community. The police department, we work with the police, the local police officer association, and our district attorney office. I formed a, and led a Brown Act group with four of my colleagues, so our staff could collaborate on this issue. We incorporated every single change that they wanted. My staff initially shared a complete language on May 29th that was vetted by staff. Last Thursday evening, most of our Brown Act had agreed to co-sign our memo. Without any prior notification or reason, these colleagues abruptly withdrew the next day, only to publish a separate memorandum that is identical spirit, as we council colleague like to say, and for layman term, nearly identical language to the memo that I already had published. If there's a problem with staff or chief of staff, we address it, but it doesn't give you the right to hijack someone else's hard work. So, let me be clear. This is not a collaboration. It is plagiarism. What concerned me is not just the fact duplicating my hard work and my staff hard work for the last three weeks. It is quite pivot behind the scene. After a commitment has already been made, if we, as elected official, cannot uphold basic standard of integrity with each other, how can we ask the public to trust our decision? I am glad that my colleague agreed with the recommendation put forth by my office. It reinforces the strength of my ideas, but council should not operate like a competition for credit. This should not be an open forum for collaboration, shared leadership, and transparent decision-making. We had a chance to speak with one voice on an important accountability measure, and instead, the public, the public only see political maneuvering triumphing over honest partnership. This is not only a missed opportunity for ourselves, but for the people of San Jose. Despite this, I am committed to the work. I am committed to collaborate. As a fire captain, my, as a former fire captain, I know what it takes, a team, to do work together. So, I don't need sole authorship to stay focused on the outcome, but I do need trust, honor, integrity from my colleagues. I'm not afraid to stand alone. In this political arena, I am not beholden to any group, anyone, but I am beholden to our residents. While staying up last night, I was disappointed with heavy heart that today I have to ask this question. Did we lost our moral compass? Did we lost our decency or dignity? If so, then vote with your conscience. You know, in the spirit of collaboration, I appreciate that they included my memo that they copied. That's highly upsetting to me. I don't want to ever have to come out and say this, but it's a must. We should never accept this. And I want to say thank you for all the staff and my colleagues. Again, with utmost disappointment that we operate in a way that is not serving our constituent. As a leader of our community, we set the high standard, and every time we slip, people see it. We can never have this happen on our council. Thank you.
Councilmember, not sure I understand the purpose of your comments. I will just say, for the record, Councilmember Kamay's name was first on my list on my screen. I don't know if you saw something different on yours, but I had Councilmember Kamay first. I'll also just note, we quite often have councilmembers submit memos that have some more recommendations. I have seen multiple councilmembers put forward the exact same recommendations, either because they're not in the same Brown Act group, or it's after the Friday 5:00 p.m. deadline. As I think you know, and I'm not sure why we're discussing this in a public meeting, members of our Brown Act were concerned about information that your office shared with external parties based on conversations we had in confidence, and the other four of us in the Brown Act group decided to separately write our own memo. There was no copying or plagiarism of your memo despite your claim. I think we all agreed on the recommendations, but decided it was most appropriate for the four of us to sign our own memo, though we did agree on the recommendation. I think we discussed that pretty clearly in private, but since you brought it up here, I'll just set the record straight that the four of us thought it was most appropriate to sign our own memo. I thought it was a very generous gesture from Councilmember Kamay to include your memo, since we are all in agreement on what matters, which is the policy outcome. So, a little confused by your comments, but we're going to continue, and we do have a motion on the floor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm going to shift the conversation a little bit and say first, thank you, Eddie, for a really wonderful first presentation to us with your auditor's report. It was very detailed. I truly appreciate you talking about the three leaders in our community first who have passed, particularly the Officer Longfam, who died in duty last year. So, thank you for starting with that and for articulating your desire to have recommendations two and 12 supported. And as you know, the chief does not support two and 12, and the memo doesn't support two and 12. But I do appreciate your passion, your background, your history, your experience, and your professionalism. And to, to mirror what Councilmember Kamay said, you are accessible, and I don't think I've seen an IPA as much in the public as I see you. So, thank you for being out there. Thank you for being connected to the community, and it makes me want to maybe have a town hall with you come and talk to our community about what you do. So, I'll set that up later. With that, that's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll just echo those comments. Eddie, we really appreciate your efforts. I have seen you out in the community more consistently than I've seen, at least in my time, since I've been paying attention, other IPAs. Not a knock on them, but just you've really gone above and beyond in being present in the community. Also, have really built, I think, an even stronger working relationship with Internal Affairs, and I think there's greater trust and just alignment around the process, which benefits everyone. So, I want to just give you a lot of credit for the good work of you and your team, and echo the comments from Vice Mayor Foley and Councilmember Kamay. We, if it's on this item, I'm happy to go around. If we can stay on the substance, I would appreciate it, Councilmember Dewan, and then we'll get to a vote.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate, you know, the excuses. These excuses are excuses. If you, if any one of you want to see the truth, our memorandum was submitted at 2:33 p.m. The other memo was submitted after. And if you don't think it's identical words, read it. And I think we just need to be fair. As you see my blinking light when I press the button, it shows that I am first. Even just right now, my blinking light showing that I will be speaking next. So, I appreciate the candor, and I just hope that we'll continue to work in collaboration because I'm willing to, without being pressurized, without threats. And I hope that we come together to show our community, our residents, that we will be held to the higher standard, and we're there to support them. And I want to say again, thank you for Police Department and for Eddie or IPA. Thank you. Oh, by the way, the, on your memorandum, there's, I don't know what, OPIA, but please correct the, the right wording on that as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move along. Councilmember Campos?
Thank you for the opportunity to appreciate the ongoing efforts of our police department and our independent police auditor who are working together to enhance oversight and accountability. My comments are focused on Recommendation Two, which calls for the IPA to receive the same timely access to officer-involved shooting scenes, briefings, and interviews that Internal Affairs currently has. As I understand it, the IPA and our police chief had very limited time to discuss the proposed recommendations, including Recommendation Two. And I encourage my colleagues to recommend that both parties continue collaborative conversations to assess the feasibility and the operational considerations of this proposal. We acknowledge that Recommendation Two enhances transparency and collaboration in how law enforcement operates by allowing the IPA and SJPD to work in good faith, driving thoughtful consideration and sustained engagement on the issue. But right now, the IPA is not allowed to attend walkthroughs, review body-worn camera footage, or even listen to officer interviews until months after the investigation. Police Chief, I would just like to confirm with you that that statement is correct, that right now, our IPA is not allowed to attend walkthroughs, review body-worn camera footage, or listen to officer interviews until months after the investigation. Is that correct?
That's not, excuse me, that's not entirely true. Under SB 1421, a recently passed state law, we release body-worn camera footage to the public, to everyone in the world after 45 days. So, and we also have, I always hold a press conference within a day or two of an officer-involved shooting, and while balancing speed and accuracy, try to get as much information out to not just the officer, the Office of the Independent Police Auditor, but everyone in this community, because there's no greater exercise of authority, obviously, police authority, than an officer-involved shooting. So, it's important to get that information out quickly. So, we're giving information to not only the independent police auditor, but our community in San Jose a lot more quickly than I think that characterization shows.
Thank you for the clarification on the body-worn camera. Regarding the opportunity to listen to officer interviews, is that something that happens months after the investigation?
So, every, so first of all, the San Jose Police Department follows an officer-involved shooting protocol that is agreed upon by the Santa Clara County Police Chiefs Association. That's all the police chiefs in this county, as well as the district attorney. An officer-involved shooting investigation is a criminal investigation from the outset. The determination initially is, did the officers lawfully use deadly force? In addition to that, there are often outstanding suspects that may need to be identified, so an ongoing criminal investigation of not just the conduct of the police officers, but other persons involved who may be outstanding at that time. So, I had a conversation with the district attorney just last week about this issue, and he was in alignment with me and the other chiefs in the county, that this is a law enforcement exercise. It is a criminal investigation at that point. I'm not, so, so yes, it is true. He does not get those interviews right away. I'm not sure what he would do with them if he had them, and exactly what delay, what this delay is causing in terms of his ability to audit the work that we're doing. Every officer-involved shooting, first of all, gets the greatest scrutiny and investigative effort that we are capable of. It is done in collaboration with the district attorney's office from the very outset. They participate in the walkthroughs. They partner with a San Jose police detective or, or, you know, whichever agency is involved in the county, that agency's detective, to interview the officers. The district attorney compiles a extensive review and analysis and determination as to the lawfulness of that shooting. San Jose Police Department also conducts, whether there's a complaint from a member of the public or not, conducts an extensive audit of the shooting to determine whether or not our officers acted within policy at every step of the way, which is accessible to the independent police auditor. So, there is a tremendous amount of thoroughness, transparency, accountability, and legitimacy. Yes, he is not involved from the outset, but I'm really not sure how that is hampering his ability to audit what it is that we're doing.
Thank you, Chief, for that explanation. I'd like to allow our IPA to respond to that question about what the main goal of having access to crime scenes or all use-of-force instances would provide.
Thank you for allowing me to respond to that. It's twofold. It's about community trust. Community wants to know that the police auditor is watching the event from the beginning to the end. Currently, we respond out to the location, and we receive some information. And responding out to the location or the scene could indicate that we're monitoring the investigation, we're reviewing what's going on, we are getting all the information because we're on the scene at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. So, I don't want to give a symbolic presence at a scene if we're not obtaining the information. One of the things about, so it's about community trust, and they start to trust you from the beginning if you get to see the whole thing. And the biggest part that the IPA does when it goes there, we are just observers. We're just watching. We do not investigate. And that's what instills trust with community members. So, they know, okay, there's someone else outside of the police department, outside of the DA's office, who is just watching what goes on. That instills trust, transparency, and the timeliness of that is what is key, because if you get it three or four months later, then people have questions. And that's what this part is about. It's instilling that trust that we're just watching the scene. For instance, too, Internal Affairs responds to the scene. They are not investigating the crime. Only the criminal investigators are investigating the crime. Robbery homicide is investigating the crime. The DA's office has one specific purpose to respond to officer-involved shootings, and that is to see if there was any misconduct that criminally by the officer. Any underlying crimes is the police department's responsibility, because they have to send those charges in and file it with the DA. That's, so that's the distinction there. So, Internal Affairs are just observing too. They're just watching, and we're just asking to be part of that process to watch. Now, I will say that Internal Affairs, because I worked Internal Affairs for eight years, running it as a civilian, they do have some administrative duties. If there's an officer that needs to be placed on leave, if there's some kind of blood sample that has to be asked, or something like that, then that's what they're there for. But they are not investigators. They are just observing. In fact, if they don't want to violate peace officer bill of rights, they're not going to ask any questions. That's, that's why they're an observer. We're just asking for the same thing. It allows us to watch it, and so when two or three months comes down, when we get the full briefing with all the reports and all the details in the interviews, we don't have to ramp up and figure it out because we get the reports 10 days before the hearing, 10 days before the briefing. Internal Affairs has those two, three months beforehand. So, we have to scramble and figure out what's going on. Let's read the reports. Let's review and listen to what the officer's statements are, because those aren't released in a press Because those aren't released in a press conference, and those are not released in a PRA request.
Thank you for that context. I mean, again, focusing on Recommendation Two and given that this is, you know, when these incidents occur in our community, it's a media frenzy. And so making sure that we have proper protocol that ensures transparency and trust in our community is my motivation for bringing this topic up for discussion. And just going back to a point I made earlier, and I want to clarify, around Recommendation Two, how much time did, did the two of you, our Police Chief and our independent police auditor, have time to discuss that recommendation?
Thank you for the question. The Police Chief and I have had conversations about the recommendations since we started talking about the recommendations. And so we've had those times. I meet with the Police Chief once, once a month. We don't talk about the recommendations all the time like that. But we have had conversations like that. And we also, as counsel noticed, that we were supposed to present on June 2nd, or June 3rd, but that was pushed to June 17. And part of that process included some other conversations that the Chief and I needed to have as far as what specifically their, the disagreement was. And obtaining a copy of that disagreement to have a discussion. We did have an hour meeting about that discussion where the Chief did discuss the disagreements in that portion there.
Thank you for clarifying that. I am hoping that my colleagues will understand where I'm coming from with requesting a friendly amendment that would direct the City Manager, the IPA, and San Jose Police Department to continue discussion of Recommendation Two and return to counsel with a proposal. Because right now, rejecting the recommendation number two, and given what we just heard, that while there have been some conversations over the past several months, once this recommendation was written and shared, about an hour is the time that this item was discussed. And I think that it is too important of an item to not continue this conversation. So while I support the motion, I would like to ask for that friendly amendment that directs the City Manager, the IPA, and our Police Chief or Police Department to continue the discussion of Recommendation Two, returning to the City Council with a proposal.
Let's say, request for a friendly amendment. Let me turn to the maker of the motion, which was Councilmember Kamay.
I think that, without saying, the collaboration between the City Manager, the IPA, the police officer, I mean, the Police Chief, should be an ongoing thing. I mean, I don't think that there's anything in our current, whether it's the memo or the, the motion, that would prevent you from continuing that collaboration. The, the one thing that I was very sensitive to is that in this first year, there's a need to have more resources in order to do more. And I don't think that it was something that, at this time, would be a good idea. So I'm not going to accept the friendly amendment. I think that that needs to happen, that does have. And I will ask, does this preclude your doing exactly what Councilmember Campos wants?
Thank you for the question. I think I understand, understand it. It doesn't preclude, let's put it this way, it doesn't preclude me doing the job as is right now. What would be better and improved would be timely access from the beginning. One of those things I think she mentioned was a directed work about this. And like I said, I was in Fresno, and we did exactly this, we did exactly the same process. Dwight was in Sacramento. They figured it out, how to do this process where it doesn't interfere with the investigation. In fact, the example I have is that in Sacramento, when they did the criminal walkthrough, they did a separate civilian walkthrough for the civilians, the Inspector General, which is what he was there, City Attorney, and the City Manager. They could actually go through the walkthrough separate than the criminal, so it wouldn't interfere or anything like that. So my, my position is that with further discussion, I'm sure we could figure out a way because there's six other agencies, four in Northern California, that can do it without jeopardizing anything. And we just need to catch up right now. So I think further conversation is just my position that can help with that and come back with solutions that, that you can, the council can consider. So it provides not only the information that we have because obviously, when we respond to a scene, I can't, I'm not, I can't disclose anything to anyone about it there. It's confidential. But I know what's going on. And when I can go to the community and say, I know exactly what's going on, I've seen what happens, happened, I've listened to the information, I can't give you any of that, but we are monitoring it. Versus what I can tell them now is, well, I go to the scene, I get a little bit of information, but I don't know anything else.
And, and you have the resources right now to be able to do that?
I, we do that right now. We respond out to the scene. My expectation is, when, when we go out to a scene, you're usually out there 24 to 36 hours, listening to all of this information. But like I said, there's other things you can do. The body-worn cameras, instead of watching them that night, we could just receive a copy. The interviews, we could receive a copy and watch that the next day. It can all be done. We're going there already. So it can be done. It, it doesn't change anything, it doesn't add any extra hour, I mean, extra money. But it makes our, it makes our work a little bit longer. But that's the expectation of what the independent police auditor should do.
So if I might just jump in here. I just think, you know, if, if that's the direction, if the council decides that they want us to revisit number two, that's really a policy call on the council. And we'd really need that clear direction because that's a whole nother set of workload for the Police Department to take on. It will trigger a meet and confer with our police union. And we can certainly do that work, but with, you know, but to, you know, where it stands now, there has been a lot of conversation, and the Police Chief disagrees with that. And we supported him in that, that statement in there. So it's completely, again, it's completely, I'd just rather have clear direction because to, to work on what process for what end is what I would want to have clarity on. So we would know what our policy direction was a little bit more clearly.
At this point, I am not going to accept the friendly amendment and will just continue with my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamay. Councilwoman Campos, you have the floor.
I will just say that both the Office of the IPA and our Police Department would greatly benefit from further discussion. I think we all know how much we hope to make time in our schedules for these important conversations. And the explicit direction to ensure it happens would provide me the reassurance. I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Kamay. So thank you.
And I just want to, I'm sorry to add in one more thing. Please do know for, for everybody, we do have a great relationship with the IPA and the Police Department. And the IPA meet regularly and do discuss all these issues all the time. And so I think we remain open, as correct, Chief, to all new ideas that might come to the table. I also meet with the IPA on a monthly basis. So we're constantly keeping the communication channels open and continue to collaborate. And it's a strong relationship despite the check and balance notion. We want to honor the check and balance role of the IPA, but we can still be very, very collaborative in how we try to move forward in making sure the community has confidence in our policing methods.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go now to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank Chief and, and our IPA for all the work that you're doing. Chief, as you pointed out, you know, that our Internal Affairs does a great job. They, you know, we have a really robust process that I know is, is working well. You know, several years ago, and we've had, we've had IPA reports at this council meeting annually, as we're supposed to. And we've had years where we have a full house of people coming because there's concerns over the interaction, the relationship about the Police Department's behavior. I was actually surprised to have no public comment today. That's a testament, first of all, to the fact that things are, I believe, going well with our Police Department, that Internal Affairs does a good job. It also might be a fact that there's other priorities today. I'm not sure exactly what explains it, but I certainly think that there's, you know, a good relationship right now. Having said that, I also want to appreciate Eddy, you know, coming in with fresh set of eyes and saying, here's what would help us make our process better. I think that's important. The response, your, your recommendation number two seemed eminently reasonable to me. And in theory, can, will make the process smoother and more collaborative, I believe, going forward. And the fact that Internal Affairs is, does a good job now doesn't necessarily mean it always will. But also, it doesn't, we have an, we have this independent police auditor function for a reason. And it's supposed to be a second set of eyes on the same work that Internal Affairs does. And so I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. I do appreciate the suggestion from Councilmember Campos. Maybe you can clarify something for me, Eddy. I think our, there is a timeline, but through, under which an investigation has to be completed from the IPA, right? Isn't there some kind of time limit on a review? Or is it, is there, is there, is it an indefinite timeline after a incident?
Well, if you're talking specifically about an officer-involved shooting, when there's an officer-involved shooting, because the PD and DA's office, particularly DA's office is reviewing it for criminality as far as the officer's actions, then it becomes told. After it becomes untold, then there's a timeline, it's 365 days. But as we know, in an officer-involved shooting that, that occurs, it's a very important case that happens, especially if someone dies from that. So that's why timeliness, if at all possible, is of the most importance. But even with tolling, and even with a review of 365, the idea is, does the community trust the process? And that's what the IPA is there to do, to be that representative, to be the eyes, to be the observer. So the community says, somebody's got that. And that's the most important thing, regardless of the timing issue. What helps is to get the information early so we can understand it. What helps is to actually physically see it versus watching it on a video. Because that doesn't give you the same timeline, the same understanding when you're there. I have been on those scenes where, when you're there, it actually makes a difference. You're actually feeling the coldness of the air. You're seeing the light, how it actually hits versus seeing it in a video. You're also seeing the perspective of the officer, if they're in a hallway or a door, and how it looks normal on a video. But when you get there, you find out, wow, it's really thin. That's the perspective I will not have, and I will never have, by watching a video. That's what's important about being an observer. But not only that, it also watches the interaction, what happens with Internal Affairs, what happens with the, the process outside of what's on the video or what's outside of the reports. For instance, there have been cases where, and this was way before my time and the Chief's time, that officers, when there's shootings, they would congregate together and talk about their story. And they got their story straight. Those are the, I'm not saying that happens here. That was way back in the 70s, I believe. It was a 72 case or something, I don't remember. But those are the kinds of things an IPA can watch, observe. And that's what gives the public the confidence in the Police Department.
And that, and that public confidence is why we have an IPA. It's why our voters intentionally voted to strengthen the IPA in the city. And it's not a given that our public is as confident as they seem to be today. It's only been a few years since we had a completely opposite atmosphere or a very different atmosphere. So I just, I guess my, my thinking on this is, you know, we might not be there yet as far as implementing this recommendation, but I don't, you know, and while, while Councilmember Kamay said, you know, this doesn't preclude further conversations. I do, you know, my preference would be that, at least through this motion, the council sort of gives direction that the conversation continue, not necessarily with any kind of time-specific return to council or any specific outcome, like a coming forward with a proposal. But if we just kind of leave it at this, drop number two, and don't sort of say, keep the conversation going, there will be, there could be this idea that, well, we don't have any, any urgency to continue to have, you know, to talk about how we might improve this process that would help the IPA do its job better. So my preference would have been some outcome, you know, with some inclusion of some idea to, to continue the conversation, at least as, at the direction of councils, so that we know that this isn't shutting the door on this particular potential change in the procedure. So I, I don't want to, I just wanted to leave that there. I don't know if I have a specific, we've already tried a recommendation, but my feeling is that there's a, there would be room for, I think, I think I'd like to just make the point that from my perspective, we ought to continue. And I know, you know, obviously, our Chief operates in good faith and will do that when the IPA wants to talk. But I don't want this to be the end of the conversation about how we might improve that transparency early on in the process so that we do continue to make sure that our public has good trust in our Police Department and the actions of our, of our great men and women in uniform.
Thanks, Councilmember. And I'll just, I mean, Chief, I assume it's fair to say that you and, and your team will continue a very robust, ongoing dialogue with our IPA around how to enable him to do his job effectively? Is that fair to say?
Absolutely. So in addition to the monthly meetings that we have regularly scheduled, Mr. Aubrey and I are in constant contact. And that, that's actually been a really, a breath of fresh air. We haven't always had a relationship with previous IPAs where the dialogue was as, as free and candid as it is now. And obviously, I respect him and his experience and his integrity. So I, we're constantly working together to try to improve all of our processes. He's brought great organization to the IPA's office that didn't exist previously. And some of that was at a, at a request of, of ours, but a lot of it was his initiation and just his sense of, you know, order and making sure that the processes that, that his office is working with have, have integrity and trustworthiness. And that's been a huge improvement. And we constantly will continue to talk.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Well, it's another hands up. Thank you both for your work. We have a motion from Councilmember Kamay, which includes the group memo from Councilmember Kamay, Councilmember Mulcahy, Councilmember Salas, and myself. In the motion was included the memo from Councilmember Dwan that has the same recommendation, different backgrounds and rationales. But with that, I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So we are moving on then. We're on to item 8.5. And we're back to a script. Let's hope that I have the right one here. Okay. Item eight, and are we, Nora, are we starting with the script or the presentation? I just want to make sure. Let me ask staff. Does staff, are we starting with the presentation or shall I jump into the script that tallies the vote?
Staff does have a brief presentation.
Presentation first. Great. And then we'll open the testimony. Okay. So we'll start with the staff presentation.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Blag Izalalich, Deputy Director in the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. I'm here today with my colleagues, Vic Farley, who leads the Small Business and Neighborhood Corridors team, and Sal Alvarez, our Senior Executive Analyst on the team. The two of these gentlemen have shepherded this project for the past two years, and I'd like to thank them publicly here for that work. I'd also like to give a quick thanks to our colleagues in other city departments who have helped to shepherd this work in the Public Works Department, City Attorney's Office, and the City Clerk's Office. And I would like to acknowledge both the Mayor's Office and staff, as well as Councilmember Mulcahy and his staff for their champion of this effort. So thank you. Lastly, but certainly not least, there are two consultants that we would like to acknowledge that have been deployed to support the formation of the Alameda C-Bid. One is Civitas Advisors, who's advised the Business Association on the legal process, the calculation of assessment fees, and drafting the management plan. And Ani and Kat, who are in the audience today and deserve a huge kudos because they have led the on-the-ground campaign engaging directly with property owners. This is the first new property-based assessment district to be considered by the City Council since Willow Glen in 2008. And I'd like to now turn it over to Vic Farley for the presentation.
Thank you, Blag, and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Establishing the Alameda C-Bid is a two-phase process. Phase one was the successful petitions received by City Council on April 29, exceeding the minimum 30% required. And by City Council on April 29, exceeding the minimum 30% required. And phase two is to conduct a ballot and report on the outcome, which takes place here today. The ballot allows all property owners within the district to vote yes or no to the formation of the C-Bid. The city is a property owner in the district. It did not participate in the petition phase, but staff's recommendation is for the city to submit its ballot supporting the formation of the district. A successful ballot vote requires more than 50% of the ballots received waited by assessment to be in support of establishing the district. Only ballots received by the City Clerk by the close of the public hearing today can be counted. The name and addresses of the current property owners were provided by the county assessor in accordance with state law, and where requested duplicate ballots were issued. The ballot process was strictly managed by Public Works and the Clerk's Office. Turning to the, the bid area itself, the proposed Alameda Business Improvement District contains 420 businesses and over 1,900 jobs. The geography of the district, as you can see on the map, extends to all parcels fronting the Alameda, from the junction with Sheil Avenue on the west, the left side of your map, to Stockton Street on the east, or the right side of your map, anchored by Whole Foods. Turning to the district's services and budget, this is the proposed allocation of funds for the new district. And as you can see, 78% of all funds are focused on clean and safe, and the balance for beautification, signage, and administration. The district board will be established to review and present an annual budget to City Council, analyzing current and planned expenditures. I should note that the city's assessment as a district property owner will be approximately $8,500 annually. Turning to the City Council's actions today, the recommendations on your agenda and memo, and actions that will occur today are as follows. The mayor will conduct the required public hearing, that the City Council, as property owner, accepts staff's recommendations to vote in favor of forming the district. The city clerk then tallies and reports the outcome of the ballot that has been conducted over the past 45 days. And critically, if the tallying of the ballot demonstrates a majority of the assessment in favor of levying an assessment, then the City Council can consider and vote on the resolution to form the Special Assessment District for the Alameda. And finally, the next steps. Subject to the decisions of City Council today, the actions to follow are, we will need to deliver the assessment roll for all parcels to the county assessor by the end of June this month, 2025. The Alameda Business Association will finalize the composition of its C-Bid board to reflect district ratepayers, and the Alameda C-Bid will be ready to implement the district management plan from January 2026 onwards. Finally, I would just like to echo what Blagay has said, and thank the partnership that has been established between our consultants, the business owners in the Alameda, and my colleague to my left here, Sal Alvarez, for project managing a most difficult and complex work over the past two and a half years. Thank you very much. This concludes the staff's presentation.
Great. Thank you, and thank you all for your work on this. Item 8.5 is the public hearing and assessment ballot proceeding on the formation and levy of annual assessments on properties within the Alameda Community Benefit Improvement District. The council will open the public hearing on this item in order to hear and consider all testimony by interested persons related to the formation of the district. During the hearing, the city clerk will begin to collect ballots and commence tabulation. The council will also consider authorizing the city clerk to vote in favor of the district's formation as an owner of property within the district. Prior to the close of the public hearing, council will direct all property owners who have not already submitted their ballots to submit their ballots to the city clerk for tabulation. No ballots will be accepted after the conclusion of the public hearing. The public hearing on the proposed formation of the Alameda Community Benefit Improvement District is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on this issue?
Yes. Scott Weber and Sandra Weber, come on down.
My husband had to leave, so I'm taking his spot. My name is Sandra Weber. I'm a D6 resident. I live in the Plant 51 condo complex next to Deradon Station, comprising 265 units, that would contribute into the funding of the Community Benefit Improvement District. The majority of the residents I've encountered are excited for what the C-Bid would do for our area. Now, whether they could find their ballot or forgot to vote is partially the result of the pandemic. We have lots of little families running around. Chalk art on sidewalks, Cahill Park Dog NATO at dusk, cricket pickup games on Saturday morning, yes, cricket is huge. A common utterance is that there's not much to do on the Alameda, unless you want a workout or a tattoo. After highlighting a few notable others, the reply is, the Alameda just seems rundown and dirty. Thank you, Councilmember Mulcahy, for showing us through personal and professional experience how an improvement district can make a difference between a struggling street for lease signs.
I'm sorry, that's your time. Back to council.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. And thank you to our public commenter. I will now ask the council to consider approving a motion authorizing the city clerk to vote in favor of the district formation and levy of assessments on city property within the district. Councilmember Mulcahy?
Mayor, since you have the script in hand, after we do this piece, what comes next? Just so that I know whether or not comments happen now.
We then go on to ask if there are any property owners who wish to submit a ballot to the clerk, and then we will get on to counting the ballots.
And then, where's the appropriate time for council comments?
It would be after this council vote, and then before closing the public hearing. Is that right, Nora?
Yes. The council votes, and then...
So why don't we, why don't we entertain, if, if it's okay with the council, I'd suggest we entertain the motion to authorize the city clerk to vote in favor of the district and levy of assessments on city property within the district. We'll come back for further discussion.
So moved.
Is that right? Okay. Thank you. All right. Tony, let's vote on that. Okay. All right. Why don't I, thank you. That passed unanimously. We'll come back to the council.
Then, then...
We're here. So unless, okay. So we'll continue with the public hearing, and then come back to the council. At this time, we are preparing to close the public hearing. Are there any property owners who wish to submit a ballot to the clerk? If so, you must submit your ballots now. Do not see anyone coming down. Okay. The public testimony portion of this public hearing is now closed. The city clerk will not accept any further ballots from this point forward. As Tony is tabulating the ballots, can I turn to colleagues for comment? Okay. Wonderful. Let me go back to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a dance we're doing here.
I'm sorry, before you start, we are going to tabulate the ballots down the hall in Room 120. There are a lot of ballots in this box.
Okay.
And we don't want to count here, where we're going to disturb you. So anybody in the audience who wants to watch my staff count the ballots, exit, go down the hall to Room 120.
Okay.
Now you can talk.
And, and Tony, how long do you think you'll need? Any idea?
Move on to the next item. There's a lot of ballots.
Understood. Okay. Then we may move on to the next item. But let's first get any commentary from the council, starting with Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in April during the petition stage, running the gauntlet of creating a Community Benefit Improvement District, the C-Bid, is no small feat. As the vote is still outstanding, thank you, Tony, for making this totally nerve-wracking for many of the people in this room. This is like, kind of like our, you know, speeches on election night, when you don't really know what's happening, but you've got to stay positive. But I'm feeling very confident. Regardless, there are people to thank and records to set straight, and I'll just take a moment for that. First off, to the staff of OED, Sal and Vic and Blagay and the rest of your team, really appreciate the support for this process. You've been doing it longer than I have. And to the Public Works teams that supported you on that. To Mayor Mahans and my District 6 office, especially Michael Lomio and Joey Morrow, the Alameda Business Association, some of who are here, here today, and their Board of Directors, who ultimately will be kind of managing the resources that come forward through this. To Scott and Sandra Weber and Plant 51, they've hosted a number of meetings, but also have gone door-to-door. Uniquely different to Willow Glen, downtown has residences in it, but Willow Glen does not have any residents. So the fact that residents are part of the property ownership group, I think, is a really good influence on this process and on the outcome of where the funds will be spent. And from my own experience putting the C-Bid together for Willow Glen 17 years ago, it also comes down always to one or two people. And it is no joke to do this. And I just can't thank Catherine Pendleton and Annie Anegian. Where are you? Did you leave? Because we do need to give them a big round of applause.
I think they're overseeing the vote counting.
Oh my God. They are not, they are not quitters. They are watching the vote happen. But this is a defining moment for the Alameda Business District, an inflection point, to say the least, with the opportunity to come together and shape a stronger, more economically viable future. The C-Bid offers a pathway with localized control to invest directly into the success of the area. It's a funding tool to support long-term property values, improve leasing prospects, and to serve to create a more vibrant, active scene for customers of the Alameda. One of the most important things to understand is that those who pay into this C-Bid will help guide how the funds are spent. Property owners can choose to serve on the C-Bid committee. That's what determines how the funds are used. It's aligned with a management plan developed with property owner input. This is not a tax, as some of the anti-folks would want you to think. This is an assessment that stays within the district, and it comes with safeguards, accountability, and transparency that has many checkpoints along the way. And while the C-Bid is structured to last up to 15 years to provide long-term stability, it's not locked in forever. California state law provides the opportunity each year to request disestablishment if the district is no longer reflecting the needs of the contributors. It's a financial commitment, but it's also flexible and responsive to the community it serves. The C-Bid provides an opportunity to build something long-lasting and promotes a shared responsibility for the future of the Alameda. For years, the Alameda Business Association has cycled through well-intended board members with great ideas, but they've never had any money to execute on them. So I'm very supportive of the ABA, and I know this group of conscientious stakeholders will be great stewards of these early months and years of the new C-Bid. So I'm not moving anything. We are all just waiting. So we will be back to you soon. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor. Well said, and I really appreciate the work you and your team have done to help educate and organize in the corridor. And I agree with you, this will be a transformative, assuming, I mean, we'll see how the votes turn out. But if we do move forward, this will be transformative for this business district. So we will now move on to the next item on the agenda and return to this item when the clerk indicates that she is ready to report the results of the tally. So we're going to move on to item 8.1, which is the public hearing for the approval of the Japan Town Business Improvement District Annual Budget Report and the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Before I open the public hearing, has the city clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the Japan Town Business Improvement District?
No written protests have been received from the Japan Town Business Improvement District.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. We will now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Japan Town Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the council to consider adoption of the resolution approving the budget report of the Japan Town Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2025-2026, and levying assessments for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Councilmember Salas, do you have a comment and/or want to make that motion?
Yeah.
Or another motion?
A comment and a motion.
All right.
I just want to mention that these things, these business improvement districts have been transformative for both 8.1 and 8.2. I'll say the same thing. But based on that, I would like to move to accept the 8.1.
Great. Okay. So, Tony, let's, I don't see any other hands. Let's vote. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 8.2, which is the public hearing for the approval of the Downtown Business Improvement District Annual Budget Report and the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026. Before I open the public hearing, has the city clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the Downtown Business Improvement District?
No written protests have been received from the Downtown Business Improvement District.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Downtown Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the council to consider adoption of the resolution approving the budget report of the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and levying assessments for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Councilmember Salas?
Same as before, except double transformative for downtown. Thank you very much. I have, I move to adopt the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Kameh. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 8.3 is the public hearing for the approval of the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District Annual Budget Report and the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026. Before I open the public hearing, has the city clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District?
No written protests have been received from the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay. We'll now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the council to consider adoption of the resolution approving the budget report of the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and levying assessments for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thank you to Nathan Olch and the Monterey Corridor Business Association. Worked so hard to, to make this happen, and it'll be a great improvement toward the Monterey Corridor, making it safer, more eyes, and more safety for our businesses and residents, and keeping it cleaner, and less blight and graffiti. And that's what we all worked for, to make it a safe, livable community. Thank you. And I moved for approval.
All right. I don't, thank you. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote. It's like we're still waiting on one vote. It's like we're still waiting on one vote. Oh, we lost Councilor Salas, we will just...
Sorry, didn't see he left.
Move on.
Motion passes unanimously with Salas absent.
Okay.
Aye.
I think he's registering, he's registering a yes vote. Okay. Item eight, item eight point four is the public hearing for the approval of the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District Annual Budget Report and the Levy of Assessments for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026. Before I open the public hearing, has the city clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District?
No written protests have been received from the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay. We will now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the council to consider adoption of the resolution approving the budget report of the Tully Road East Ridge Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2025 and levying assessments for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Councilor Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Business Improvement District are essential tool to strengthen the San Jose neighborhoods, particularly in community that historically been underserved. By supporting small businesses, enhance public space, create vibrancy, an inclusive environment, they also act as a local presence on the ground, keeping a close eyes on businesses in our neighborhood, enabling a quicker and more responsive action. Supporting bids is a smart step toward a more equitable and resilient city. Thank you to Treebub, again to Nathan Olch and Christina Boy and her whole group for putting this together, and thank you to Vic Farley as well, and his, the OED have done incredible job to put it all together. Thank you. And I moved for acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. You know, I've been a big advocate for adding bids, but if I have to read such a lengthy script every year, I'm gonna have to change my opinion on that. No, in all seriousness, thank you to everyone who has helped in the creation of these bids, helped operate them, and supported our small businesses and neighbors in these corridors that are significantly better because of that, this vehicle for shared investment. So congratulations to all of the bids that were just renewed. We are going to continue on, we're all waiting for the results of eight point five, but we're on to item eight point six. Yes. Yes, Councilmember Kame.
Yeah, I'm a little bit jealous that I don't have one in my district, but I just wanted to give a good shout out to Vic Farley, because he has done so much work, and, you know, currently, we have a Winchester Neighborhood Business Association in my area that I hope someday we will also be in a position to, to have a C bid. So I just, I just want to say how much work has gone into it, and I will look to those who have one and your experiences to be able to also replicate that in, in my district. So thank you, Vic, for your work.
Here, here, yes, and the whole team, Sal and everybody who's worked on these, thank you, thank you for your hard work. It's impossible without a lot of staff effort and engagement. We're on to item eight point six. We do not have a staff presentation. This is the 2026 Major Event Zone Ordinance. Tony, do we, do we have public comment?
We have one for Kat. Please make your way down, you will have one minute to speak.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Kat Angelov with the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. I'll be quick. We're very excited about this ordinance and appreciate staff's early introduction of this ordinance in light of 2026. We're hosting a number of games next year, and we want to leverage those opportunities as much as possible in our city to bring more investment. Thank you so much, and we urge your support.
Thank you. Back to council.
Thank you. All right, coming back to the council. Councilmember Salas? I got you. Go ahead.
Yeah, most of them...
You might figure this out before the end of your last meeting.
You'd think I'd know by now, right? Just, I do know to keep it brief, and again, these are, we've talked about these before, these are in my district, and this is really exciting that we're really entering into this kind of opportunities for all of our vendors and for our city. So with that, I want, I move that we accept item eight.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Yasmin, let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We are on to item eight point seven. Councilmember Mulcahy, I believe you may be recusing yourself on this item, is that correct?
I am, Mayor. Outfront Media, Clear Channel Outdoor, apparent companies of billboard companies before the council is reported on my Form 700 are a form of income. I'm recusing myself from item eight point seven.
Okay, thank you. We'll let the council member step back into the green room, and we'll, we'll come get you when we're done with this item. Okay, so item eight point seven is actions related to large format digital electronic signs on city-owned property. We have a staff presentation, so I'm gonna hand it off to the team for the presentation.
Good afternoon. Vlagis Law, Deputy Director in the City Manager's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and I'm joined here in the box with Kevin Ice, Assistant to the City Manager and Director of Real Estate in the City Manager's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and David Keon, who's our Principal Planner in the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, leading the environmental team. So we are happy to bring this today to council after a very long journey around large format digital signs, a journey that started back in, at least in September of 2018, when the council approved Council Policy six dash four, allowing off-site programmable signs for commercial speech on city-owned property. At that time, staff was directed to conduct two requests for proposals, one for signs in the downtown core and one for freeway-facing signs that had all been cleared at a project program level EIR. In December of 22, we issued a notice of intended award to Orange Barrel Media for five downtown sites, and earlier this year, in February, city council approved the negotiations and the execution of a lease with Orange Barrel for sites in the core. In March of 23, 2023, we issued a notice of intended award to Clear Channel Outdoor for two sites on city-owned property, one at Highway 87 and West Mission, right outside of the parking lot across from the police department, and one at the Mayberry Road, 1404 Mayberry Road and Highway 101. Also, we issued a notice of intended award to Outfront Foster Interstate for a city, for a sign at a city-owned parcel right off of Highway 87 and Willow Street. And we are here today to have council consider approval of negotiation and execution of a lease with those leases, with those two companies for freeway-facing signs. Both of those companies, Clear Channel Outdoor and Outfront Foster Interstate, are likely familiar names to all of you. They both have Bay Area roots and have been in the outdoor, out-of-home media business for many, many years. They have a nationwide and an international presence and have, you know, big backing in terms of the resources and the ability to respond to all of the, the demands and the parameters of the lease terms that we're engaging with them. From an environmental perspective, we, I mentioned earlier that when Council Policy six dash four was amended, there was a program level EIR with these sites in February, from February 2024 to 2025, there were project level initial study mitigated NEC for all three of the sites. In February and March, we had public circulation of the SEQA documents for each one of the sites. We did receive comments with both of those, a total of about thirty-five comments, twelve emails on the Willow Street site, actually thirty-eight comments, twelve emails on the Willow Street site, and twenty-six emails on the West Mission and Mayberry sites. In May of 2025, we posted a public hearing notice in the San Jose Post Record, and we also mailed public hearing notices to tenants and owners of properties located within a hundred, or a thousand feet of each of the proposed signs. And earlier in June, we posted the city's response to comment documents for both of the projects in all three areas online for public review. Just a quick tour of the sites. This is the first Clear Channel Outdoor site at Highway 87 and West Mission. It is the blue dot that you see on the screen on the map. That is the parking lot right across the street from the police station on Mission Street. The second Clear Channel sign is at Mayberry Road and 101, and you can see that is actually a double-faced sign. You can see both the east view and the west view. The Clear Channel sign at 87 and West Mission is actually a single-faced sign. So three total faces for Clear Channel. And then the Outfront Foster site at 87 and Willow Street is also a double-faced sign. And this next slide just gives you a little bit of a closer look at the proposed site designs, both for Clear Channel and for Outfront Foster. And I'd like to hand it over to Kevin Ice to discuss the more specific lease terms.
Thank you, Blag. So staff today are recommending council proceed with three leases, two with Clear Channel Outdoor and one with Outfront Foster Interstate. These leases provide for an initial term of ten years and two five-year option periods at the city's option, provided the tenants remain in good standing. The city must consent to any transfer of ownership of the signs. The property will be restored by the tenant upon termination, but the city will assume ownership of the signs in the event of abandonment of the leases. The city will have the ability to terminate the lease, provided the tenant is compensated for the sign in the event that the property is required for a city use. These leases will require payment of a share of gross revenue as rent, although, although there is a minimum guaranteed amount, or MAG, as well. The RFP solicitation called for the payment of a minimum of thirty-five percent of gross revenues. Consistent with the RFP responses, Clear Channel will pay forty-five percent of gross revenue, and Outfront Foster will pay forty percent of gross revenue for their lease. Outfront Foster's MAG amount will escalate at a higher rate, three percent a year, starting in year six, and Clear Channel's minimum guaranteed rent will escalate two percent a year, starting in year six. This slide shows projected rent revenue to the city over the term of the leases. The minimum guaranteed rent amount for the three leases over the twenty-year period is just over twenty-one million, and the estimated rental income based on revenue projections are higher, totaling approximately twenty-eight million. The RFP evaluation panel included, it included an out-of-home media expert who concurred that the revenue projections and proposed rates provided are reasonable and in line with the market. Turning to general terms of the lease and sign operations, all signs must adhere to Council Policy six dash four, which has certain content restrictions, restricts hours of operation between midnight and 6:00 a.m., and restricts motion. The tenants will pay for all utilities, maintenance, repair, and site restoration. Utilities will be independently metered and powered with one-hundred percent renewable energy through San Jose Clean Energy. The city will receive twelve-point-five percent of time shown on the signs for city messaging. This allows for things like display of art, promotion of events, distribution of important city messages. The signs will run a rotation of eight blocks, so having twelve-point-five percent of time dedicated to city use means that we will have one block in every rotation for our messages. This is an increase from the RFP proposals, which allocated ten percent of time to city use. And we already have a list of city departments interested in utilizing this messaging time, including fire, police, parks, and the library. In addition, the city will retain the ability to control the signs in any emergency. And these are the content prohibitions for the signs. Restrictions include alcohol, firearms, tobacco, cannabis, or drugs, violence, or anything unlawful, profanity, or anything lewd, political or religious content, and anything adverse to the city or representing the city without our consent. And with that, I'll pass it back to Blag.
One of the most significant community benefits in this proposal is actually the takedown of current static, often blighted and very old billboards around the city. So in Council Policy six dash four, there is a requirement of a six-to-one removal ratio. That would mean that a total of thirty faces would need to be taken down in exchange for the five faces that are being proposed. Clear Channel Outdoor has proposed the takedown of twelve structures, nineteen faces, in a variety of council districts. As you can see on the slide, Outfront Foster has proposed the takedown of twelve structures, which equates to sixteen faces in four council districts. So all total, the requirement of thirty, of a thirty-face takedown is actually being exceeded by five faces. A total of thirty-five faces will be taken down throughout the city before these new freeway-facing signs go up. The majority of those are in District Three. There are fifteen faces that are being taken down in District Three, because all three signs are going up in District Three. Tree replacement ratio is also five-to-one. There are two potential trees that could be removed at Highway 87 and West Mission, and ten replacement trees will be planted in lieu of the, the five that are, the two that are taken down. So just to recap, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution certifying the initial study mitigated NEC for the signs on the West Mission Street and Mayberry Road sites. We'd like council to adopt a resolution certifying the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the sign on the Willow Street sign, and we would like council to adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager or her designee to negotiate and execute lease agreements and any necessary supporting agreements with Clear Channel Outdoor and Outfront Foster Interstate. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Tony, do we have public comment on item eight point seven?
Yes, I have five cards.
Great.
Six cards, so I'd like to call Dr. Paul Linem, Kat Angelou, Jason Hemp, Sarah Fishlater, John Miller, and Dash Leeds, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kat Angelov, on behalf of the San Jose Chamber of Commerce, once again. Here in support of the proposal today, we are very happy to support OBM's proposal a few months ago, and want to build on top of that by supporting more digital signs in San Jose. We see this as a really important revenue source for the ongoing budgets as we do look at deficits in the future. I'd also like to say our members are particularly excited about the community benefits that are included. Taking down the static signs is really important to the future economic health of San Jose. So with that, we urge your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Paul Linem from Lick Observatory, University of California, Mount Hamilton. Anyone peddling the fallacy that LED billboards contribute less to sky glow and light trespass is ignorant of the physics of the scattering of light and fourth-order power laws, and therefore lacks credibility. The scientific consensus of over thirty thousand scientists... The scientific consensus of over 30,000 scientists in 10,000 publications is that light pollution is associated with every major disease, especially hormonal cancers. Light at night is being described as Edison's cancer epidemic, the tobacco of breast and prostate cancer. Blue light from LEDs is toxic for all life. Today, the pervasive distribution of LEDs is being equated to DDT in the 1960s. LEDs are described as the new asbestos. Good luck defending yourselves against the health suits that are coming in 20 years' time. A million dollars a year is not going to cover you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, council members and city staff. I'm Sarah Fishlater, the Director of Real Estate Development for Northern California at Clear Channel Outdoor. It's been a pleasure to work with the city through this process, meeting with staff, elected officials, and various stakeholders in the community. The digital billboards being considered today will extend our existing relationship with the city of San Jose in positive ways. The partnership will create new revenue, remove existing static billboards, amplify important city messaging, support major events and entertainment zones, and the overall economic development of the city. Clear Channel's digital billboards will also complement the work that's already being done inside the city's terminals at San Jose Mineta International Airport, which we transformed into the first all-digital airport. We look forward to strengthening the partnership and can answer any questions you may have today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Jason Hemp, District 3, no digital billboards in San Jose. We urge you to reject this proposal of the freeway-facing digital billboards on city property. We collectively believe that this is not in the best interest of our community and that there are other, better ways to beautify the city and generate revenue. There are many reasons to oppose digital billboards, but in light of my limited time to speak, I'll cover one, the litigation risk. This is a Trojan horse. Once you approve this, more billboards are going to come to San Jose. If you believe that you can only limit it, billboards on public property and prevent private property owners from pursuing the same opportunity, you'll probably have more lawsuits coming to your doorstep. So let's not delude ourselves. You might want to ask for the city's analysis on that matter. And lastly, check the letters of the public. There are 24 residents that...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I'm John Miller with no digital billboards in San Jose, but today I'm speaking for myself. Since following the scheme to allow new digital billboards, I've been struck by the following actions of this and previous city councils. A total refusal to acknowledge San Jose's history of beautifying the environment because doing so was good, not bad for business. A total indifference to the fact it took six long years to finally learn that downtown billboards would generate only a tiny fraction of 1% of the city's budget, not the bonanza implied by billboard advocates. But the most egregious contention justifying digital billboards by more than one city council member was that deserving city programs needed funding from billboards that otherwise might not be available. A classic example of the ins justifying the means and a disturbing revelation that the council, the city...
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. We are broadly opposed to the proliferation of light pollution in these billboards, and in March, our chapter in the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, known as the Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance, sent a letter explaining why the ISMND for the Willow Street site provides insufficient analysis for its claims. The photometric analysis shows that .49-foot candles of light will shine into riparian vegetation along the Guadalupe River, and that .3-foot candles could impact the river directly. For comparison, the light of the full moon is measured between .01 and .03-foot candles. So we're talking about light 10 to 30 times the brightness of the full moon impacting the Guadalupe River and its habitat for hours every night until midnight. Did the ISMND analyze the scientific literature on light pollution to determine if this increase in brightness can impact fish, birds, and other species? No. Did they measure the current levels of light pollution on the site to determine if these new billboards will increase light pollution? No. An environmental impact report is required.
Thank you. Back to council.
Thank you. Let's come back to the council, and we will start with Councilmember Salas.
Yeah, these are all three in my district, and I will be supporting the item. And I don't take that decision lightly, not only for myself, but because I'm aware that there are a number of community members who are passionately against digital signage of any type, and some of those are my neighbors and friends, by the way. I listened to their comments in meetings, I listened to public comments, I read the letters, the emails, and the calls. Behind the scenes, I've had several meetings with economic development staff, lighting experts, signage technical experts, and I wanted to ensure I understood the concerns and the mitigating factors and the benefits. I'll mention I also met, after the last meeting we had last week, I met with council. I didn't meet, but I exchanged emails with the attorney, or city attorney, to address this specific issue that had been brought up in public comment here. Many constituents have raised concerns about the negative impacts of light emitted from these signs. I'm also confident that the technology built into modern electronic signage targets the lighting to the specific viewing spot desired, and adjusts for ambient lighting. It generally operates when people are awake to view the signs, and it incorporates LED features with louvers that limit light dispersion, both upward and sideways. The three sites the signs were selected for were carefully selected, and so in additional step, the signs have been cited well beyond the distances from residents and riparian habitats the state regulations require. I do want to mention about riparian habitats. Anyone who knows me know I spend a lot of time on our rivers. I am a huge, passionate advocate for our rivers, and I really thought about this seriously. Again, I want to mention that there are three locations, a total of five signs, because some are kind of at a V, there's double signs. But of those 30, three locations, we get over 30 static billboards removed, 15 in my district, eight in District 6, and a lot of you other districts who don't have even a little bit of light coming from those are also getting a little benefit. But even more than that, the 30 signs we're removing bring in no income to the city. These signs, the three, not the 30, but the three that are coming in, are going to be bringing in about $1 million a year to the city. And I hear a lot of people telling me, "Oh, $1 million is nothing. You've got a billion-dollar budget. What is that?" But I will tell you, sitting here on council, I am amazed at the myriad of unquenchable requests and the pleasure when I can even give a $5,000 grant, let alone a $25,000 or $50,000. A million dollars is a lot of money to this council, to this city. It makes a huge difference. And again, in addition to the income, the city will have messaging access for signage for eight minutes of every operating hour. I think I did that calculation. So, you know, we'll be able to put emergency notices and police recruiting and special events and important messages like that. I know all of, many of the departments are excited to have that eight minutes of time every hour. So along with my colleagues, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, and council members Cohen and Mulcahy, we issued a memo, because the one issue was, for sure, we're going to take those signs down before those billboards go up. Blogg, I know you said they will, but we just issued them, just in case. And Blogg, I want to thank you. Since we voted on the digital billboards before, you have allowed me to look at the contracts that you've been negotiating, and I, well, I won't say I did much. It's really a pleasure to work with you and to realize that even behind the scenes afterwards, we can work with OCA and tweak, if you will, or at least comment on those contracts. So again, with that as background, I want to make a motion to accept staff's memo along with a memo issued by Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Foley, Councilmember Cohen, Mulcahy, and myself.
Thank you, Councilmember. Could I ask you, is a friendly amendment to instead move the memo released today with the four of us minus Councilmember Mulcahy, given that he needs to recuse himself on this item?
I'll accept that friendly amendment. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Let me turn now to Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. And I thank you, Councilmember Salas, for your thoughtful comments, and I know you think these things through in great detail. You know, we've been having these conversations on billboards repeated periodically over the years, and I certainly am aware of the concerns and also don't take lightly any environmental concerns around these billboards, and so I put a lot of thought and study into this. First of all, that led us to the memo that I was an author on a few years ago when we were discussing the airport, to increase the takedown number from four to six, which I think has, you know, improved this quite a bit. Because as I came to learn, first of all, the old static billboards have incandescent bulbs that point straight up into the sky. The directional light pollution is actually worse from the static billboards, but six being taken down for one, each face going up, makes a big difference in our community. And the blight of many of these old billboards is quite striking. My example I use are the two that I know are on the takedown list at the corner of 10th and Heading. It's not in my district, but I drive by them. Coming from my district in North San Jose to City Hall, that's the route I take nearly every other day. And that is quite an eyesore in our city, and there's many of spots like that around the city. So I know that there's definitely an improvement coming. As part of our work a couple of years, a few years ago as well, on the energy consumption question on these, because certainly we don't want to, you know, use more energy than we need. First of all, we're requiring 100% clean energy through San Jose Clean Energy. But more importantly, I did some research, and some of the folks who are experts on billboards can correct me if I'm wrong on some of this, but I know I've gotten some information about the energy use on a static, current static billboard with incandescent bulbs versus these electronic ones. Turns out that the, for sure, likely, one current static billboard uses as much energy as the new digital, but for sure, two of the static uses more energy than one current digital. We are actually reducing total energy use by removing static billboards that are currently being lit. And the other piece that isn't really thought about much is what it takes when the digital, when the static billboards are in use to change the billboard itself, the petroleum products used to make the billboard face that gets put up, the truck that comes in to drive to the site with people that have to then climb and put it on manually. There is a footprint to the turnover of non-digital signs that doesn't exist with digital signs. So there's a larger context to these signs. And then on the revenue side, Councilmember Salas said it well, but, you know, as I was haggling over trying to find $90,000 to keep away for the youth at Bariessa and Alviso to continue to have a place to play basketball on weekends, we know that in our essential reserve fund, which used to be, when I started on council, $3 million per year that we can use for projects in our district, and in our current budget environment is $1 million this year, that, $1 million will make a huge difference for the residents in our community. So with that, I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay. I will as well. I don't see any other hands. Well said by my colleagues. We're missing, oh, no, he's recused.
That's right. Motion passes unanimously with Mulcahy recused.
Thank you, Nora. Great. Thank you. Nora's going to retrieve. Councilmember Mulcahy. Tony, are you still processing ballots?
They're still counting.
Still counting? Okay. Then we will, this is suspenseful. Okay.
It's exciting. We have a bunch of people watching.
Yeah, I'm eager to see the results. Okay. We are on to item 8.8. This is the Resolution Authorizing Grant Agreements for the Navigation Hub and the Motel Program. We have a brief staff presentation. Eric, as soon as you are ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So Eric Solivan, Director of Housing, and I'm joined today by Cupid Alexander, who is Deputy Director over Grant Homeless Response and Data Management. We'll go through a brief presentation today about the, so this, what we're bringing forward here is to provide contracts under the 2025-2026 budgets. We already voted on the budget last week. Within that budget, it contained $14 million for the operations of our motel strategy. It also contained funding for the navigation hub. This is for the selection of the supportive service provider for the five motels that they'll be operating, as well as the Navigation Safe Sleeping Hub that will be operating at Taylor Street. And so this will go through just a quick overview as to how the operation of the Safe Sleeping Navigation Hub will function, how that will tie into our work that we're doing with the five motels, and how that synchronizes into the work that we're doing in clearing the waterways, which at this point also is encompassing, including the clearing of some of our large encampments throughout the city. And so we'll go through a quick review of that as well, of the operations of the site. And as part of this work, we are activating the procurement, streamlined procurement provisions of the Shelter Crisis Act Declaration, as we are moving very quick to set up and turn on these operations, you know, in response to council directive. And so very briefly, back in June of 2024, when council directed the city manager to proceed forward with the selection and review of sites for safe sleeping operations and other interim housing considerations. As part of that analysis, we had identified a list of sites. Those sites, we selected Taylor Street from the list of sort of land opportunities to develop the first safe sleeping model, and then we looked at other more expeditious options of interim housing that we could turn on, building on some of the existing motels operations that we currently have, which were primarily funded through Project Home Key applications. And so this strategy is looking at quick leasing options, where we have selected motels that also could be potential good fits for Project Home Key-type acquisition and redevelopment, or we would look at other ways in which there are other financing, housing, taking these sites through just basically rehabs into single-room occupancy-type conversions, rather than some of the requirements of Project Home Key, which is demolition and podium rebuilds, which are very expensive. Project Home Key was a good program, but it limited in terms of operating costs, and the demolition and rebuild requirements, you know, will be continuing challenges that not only San Jose experiences, but also cities throughout California. And so this is sort of a two-part analysis, where we moved quickly to open up a quick safe sleeping site, and that's at Taylor Street, and then pivoted to motel strategy with a look to turning on quick operations, and then looking at strategies for potential future down-the-road acquisitions and reconversions of these into more permanent housing. And so now I'll ask Cupid just to go through a few of the operational components of this.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Again, I'm Cupid Alexander, W. Director. I'll walk through how this proposal strategically builds on our sheltering infrastructure with a focus on flow, safety, and data-backed accountability. So we're seeking authority to enter into contracts totaling about $9.26 million, $2.4 million for the Safe Sleeping Navigation Hub, $6.86 million for the Motel Program. These are not new costs, as Eric mentioned. They're already allocated in the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget, and were already launched quickly upon approval. So one of the things is that we've selected Home First as the provider for the Navigation Hub and Motel Program. Their operational experience and organizational infrastructure make them well-suited to deliver with quality, scale, and continuity, particularly with a targeted launch in August. Contracts will run retroactively from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And so I'm going to give you an overview on this slide really quickly. The Navigation Hub is at 1157 East Taylor Street, will include 56 tents, eight of which are ADA-accessible. This site is not a campsite. It's a triage zone, a structured and staff space where people leaving encampments can safely stabilize, receive services, and connect to interim and permanent housing. It's available to both singles, adults, and couples. So just a reminder that the hub is part of a broader connected system, so it's not going to sit out there on its own island. It links directly to our motel rooms, tiny homes, safe parking, and other... It links directly to our motel rooms, tiny homes, safe parking, and other interim and permanent housing. It also supports our waterway abatement effort, so we aren't just displacing encampments, we're offering alternatives that lead to housing. Excellent. So as Eric mentioned, we're securing five motels totaling 251 rooms, providing space for up to 331 people with an optional 20 safe parking spaces. We've already conducted local community outreach in our neighborhoods near these motels, and we've heard the concerns and we want to be crystal clear here. These motels will not house sex offenders, they will be staffed and managed 24/7, and they will prioritize people at highest risk with those acute medical, behavioral health, or safety vulnerabilities. These are people who are already in our communities, often living in tents or vehicles just blocks And just a reminder, each motel will operate with onsite meals, 24/7 staffing and security, case management, and linkages to behavioral or medical health care. But this isn't just a shelter, it's a launching pad for long-term progress. The focus is on connection and transition, moving people forward, not just holding them in place. Excellent. So we've embedded accountability and transparency from day one. Performance will be tracked in real time, reported publicly on our emergency interim housing dashboard, and included in our annual homelessness report. We've built flexibility into these contracts so that we can adjust operations if needed and report back to you and the public as we go. So I'll hand it back over to you.
Okay, yeah, so thank you, Cupid. And so the recommendation here is just to prove that the staff recommendation to move forward with these sites. As Cupid had mentioned, safe sleeping site, this is first of our experimental, as we're taking a continuing sort of above-all approach, how we're utilizing this site and then thinking through the quick turn-on of other motel strategies allows us to get to this goal of opening over 1,000 beds here in this calendar year of 2025 and being able to bring a lot of individuals indoors while also stabilizing the overall shelter operation. And I'll give two other quick data points. By the end of this calendar year, we will be operating 23 different sites across the city, nearly 1,900 units across the city. That is an enormous shelter system with all the challenges that it brings, but also opportunity to ensure that we're creating sufficient alignment throughout the performance of each of these sites to ensure throughput into more housing options. As we'll be bringing on roughly, just over, I think, 300 more permanent housing units into the city this year, there's real opportunity to bring folks indoors and then transition more individuals into permanent housing. And so that is our presentation for today and happy to take questions.
Thanks for the presentation. And Eric, at the end there, contextualizing the overall effort. I think the city and its residents have made just a tremendous investment in building out a robust, very, very dignified shelter and interim housing system that's helping us really move the needle on this crisis of unsheltered homelessness. Let me go to Tony for public comment, and then we'll come back to the council.
We have two cards for Sarah and Marina. Please make your way down. It's just going to be one minute.
Hi, I'm Sarah. So I have a question regarding the Bristol Hotel in that program, because it's one of the five motels, but compared to others, it's more expensive because when I check it, it's like $200 a night booking, while the others are like around 100. So I'm wondering how city will cost for this hotel, because city will have different price compared to booking, right? So I wonder how city will cost for this hotel compared to other motels, because you don't have split details of these costs of these individual motels or hotels in this program. So that's my first question. The second question is to Pam, because you mentioned the children may go to the nearby elementary school, and I wonder who will fund that school? And is that also part of 8.8, or is it somewhere else? And if you could provide details, that could be helpful. And these are my two main concerns. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, coming back to the council, let me start with Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much. And, you know, a few months back, I was thinking, oh, a hub would be great to be able to put things together, and here you go, you have the navigation hub. So I want to thank you so much for all your work, and I know that every year we get better and better and better. And, you know, thinking about how it is that we can bring people in, you know, and sort of like move them along the continuum of care that's necessary to get them into a better and more permanent situation eventually is something that has taken some time, excuse me, that has taken some time, but I really do appreciate it. Excuse me, I guess I've been talking too much. But I do appreciate that going on the website, I found that you do have an operations plan and all of that. I don't know if it has changed, but I thought that that was very helpful. I also wanted to know, I know you do your annual report, but are you going to create some kind of dashboard or something so that we're able to follow it along the way?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Kamai. So we have an existing dashboard that shows utilization rates across all of our sites that's on our website today, and as each new site comes onboard, we'll be adding just the updates as we're going in through the move-in process.
Thank you. That is just very far and away from what we used to have, you know, prior to your being here. So I just want to thank you for your thoughtfulness. I'd also like to thank your team, Cupid and others, who participate in this and really have come together to address a very, very, very complex issue. And I know that we're only going to get better, and I would like to move adoption of the resolution authorizing the housing director or his designate to negotiate and execute grants agreements.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Thank you. This is really exciting, actually, to see these motel conversions coming in. I think this is a clean, safe place for these residents to move into and relocate off the streets or our creek beds. I want to thank you, Eric, for being as detailed and organized as you are and Cupid as well. And Eric, thank you for coming to my community meeting last week. I know it was a lot, but you answered the questions with grace and professionalism, and I truly appreciate it. This is just one of the many strategies we're using to address homelessness. It's the humanitarian crisis that we face today, and this is one of the ways that we can bring people indoors. In the case of the Bristol Hotel, bringing in mothers and children or senior women is the right thing to do. It breaks my heart to think that mothers are out there living in tents, that their children may be pulled away to foster care because they're not providing the right home for them. This will stabilize this family, which is so critical in the mental health of the moms who may have left a domestic violence situation to end up where they are, just with the shirt on their backs and their children. So what we are doing is hugely important, and I stand behind it 100%. This isn't a panacea, though, so it's not the only solution, it's just a lot of, it's one solution that we can deploy very quickly. We know that emergency interim housing takes two, in the case of Cherry, three years to build and occupy. That's too long. That means people are living on our streets three years longer than they should. This, it's turnkey. Can you, I do have a few questions for you specifically related to the Bristol, but overall issues. Are we, we are leasing these properties for a certain amount of term?
That's correct. The existing contracts are to lease the properties for 12- or 20-month terms, and during that period, we'll be evaluating them for acquisitions and then conversions.
Okay, so it's potential that some of these we may not work out, or others may be perfect, and we decide that acquiring them makes more sense?
Correct.
Okay. How did Bristol get on the list?
Yes, so we did an assessment as we began to shift the strategy from that original June 2024 memo to look at what can we turn on quicker. From the day we shifted strategy back in November of next year till today, we moved pretty quickly because we knew this is going to be a quick turnkey option. That initial list began with nearly 20 different hotel options, working with the real estate team to go through each of those options. That dwindled down to then 15, then to 10, then to these five, as we considered a whole host of factors, the three chief factors being, one, could this potentially be a good location here that we can move quickly in because there isn't much capital repairs? There is some basic work, we're going to do it at all five sites, adding fencing, a security guard post, and a hot box in order to control kind of vermin infestation. That's about it at each of these sites. They were quick turnkey. Two, is this a potential good consideration for conversion later on down the road? Is we're able to get to a negotiated price, which is why all the language in each of the leases and the LOIs that we have executed contains that language of, we're going to consider this as a future acquisition, if we can get to a price, if we could see that this will be a quick, as I mentioned in my earlier comments, flip to single-room occupancy. So it's not demolition and rebuild, it's just like converted on the inside. So we'll go through more of that analysis as we just began that analysis with our work in Public Works, our teams in Public Works. And then three, as we looked at each of these locations, are we able to, as part of the global charge from council, how do we look at spreading out to more districts? With existing 15 operations that are heavily concentrated in certain districts, we wanted to see how do we get to further dispersion? With these eight sites, you know, these five hotels plus the navigation center, then Cherry Saroni coming online, we're going to be at 22 different sites throughout the city, and we're trying to get to charge and spread out throughout all the different council districts. So those are the three primary factors of consideration.
Thank you. And I assume the property owner was very willing to enter into this lease agreement because they're probably not, units are probably not occupied 100%?
Yes, and that's how we got to good pricing.
So financially, for the property owner, it makes good sense?
Correct.
Okay, so you answered a little bit of the security concerns. Can you talk about visitations and how people are controlled going in? You talked about fences. Can you go in a little bit into the security guard, security system a lot? Because that's one of the things we continue to hear from neighbors.
So I'm going to frame it up here, and I'm going to ask Cupid to add some more details. As part of these operations, like our existing motel operations, as discussed earlier, Pacific Motor Inn, we control egress and degress into the site, so part of the initial work is going to be around fencing. And then our supportive service program managers will be working with the teams. Want to talk a little more about that?
Yeah, and that's what we're working on with Public Works. So we took a site analysis, and we made sure that we're increasing the infrastructure for fencing. So we had fire, PDE, Public Works taking a look to make sure that even traffic that's coming off some of the main thoroughfares are not going to be backed up if someone's trying to get there, because there's going to be a security guard or a valet security right there. So it's very visible that the site is controlled, you can't just come in, you can't just show up. So there is going to be access control, and then we're going to have 24 hours, seven days a week, case management, and then site security in very visible places at very visible hours. And then to Eric's point, we're going to, of course, have the hot box for vermin control. We put it in a place, it was very trauma-informed, because a lot of individuals who come to the site, they want to see where their stuff is going to go. So we made it as close to the security box as possible, so when they know it's controlled, there's check-in and check-out, so you can't just come and you can't just leave. A lot of these individuals work some of those swing shift hours, so we're very cognizant of that, but it's going to be some of the same rules that we have. And Eric is going to be reviewing to make sure that our operational plans, when we work with our partners, they're very clear of what our expectations are.
Great, thank you. Cupid, could you go into a little detail about case management, what that looks like?
Yes, so right now, we will have case manage that. It's going to be that first touch, so they're looking at, number one, getting you to your next step. So what we're trying to do is make sure that you're in the HMIS system, that you're applying for every available housing option, even the considerations that we have on EIHs to get you to a longer-term sheltering solution with the idea that you're going to move to a more permanent solution. So that's the number one concern. Number two, it's going to be mental health, physical health, all of those community connections that you would qualify for, those are our two primary concerns. But it's, number one, this is just a temporary stop, so you can get to your next longer-term sheltering opportunity or your longer-term housing opportunity. So we're going to be analyzing them for rapid rehousing, tenant-based rentalist system, or anything that you would qualify for. So those are the first two primary things, and then it'll be job placement and things like that.
So what does a stay at the hotel look like? So how do you determine, what determines the next step? And is that, it's an EIH, it's a rapid rehousing someplace else, it's not yet affordable housing, permanent affordable housing, but what does that next step look like?
Yes, so the way these motels are fitting into the global system is the intent is to move the individuals through to our current motel operations. So that next placement, as Cupid had mentioned, can be permanent housing, can be another operation, meaning another operation outside of our shelter system, so they have a successful exit into a rapid rehousing unit that's available for two years and they get additional services.
Like a voucher somewhere?
It's like a voucher type of work. To permanent housing as well. And then looking at, what are the other considerations? As we're doing the data dive and bringing forward much detailed work that our current operators are doing at our different sites, we're better understanding how we're defining exits, better understanding how we're defining success, and as we're synchronizing more of this work as the county funds permanent supportive housing units, we're going to have each of our sites starting to plug into that coordinated entry system. So that turnover that we're able to get to, and like we're basically 30 units a month, roughly, these individuals will be able to pull into that system.
Okay, thank you. That's really great information, answers a lot of my questions. I may have a couple more in a moment, but I want to talk about how can the community get involved? We've had a lot of community members who've said, I want to get my church involved, I want to get Rotary, Kiwanis, we want to provide food. What can we do to embrace this community into the greater community? Are we looking at forming community advisory committees?
Absolutely. So my suggestion would be, go to the CACs. Usually we have a standing agenda item, add that to the agenda items. In fact, there's been a lot of community members that are asking, like, when is it going to be? The team is going to be prepared to share everything transparently as far as progress goes, ways to get involved in some of the pain points, so we can make sure that this is running very smoothly.
Great.
So yes, the community advisory committees.
Thank you. Final question, I said it wasn't, but it's going to be. Occupancy, when is Bristol Hotel likely to be occupied as a range?
So we're targeting August at this point, as we're syncing up all of these hotels, bringing on all six sites, the navigation hub plus five motels, to turn on around the same time.
Got it.
I can't give a hard date. We're working with our good partners in Public Works, Matt Lush and Catherine Brown and their team, to settle on dates as we go through this review.
Thank you. And we, District Nine is all in on the CAC. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Let's go to Councilmember Compass.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Kamai for your comments. I really appreciate the embracing of, you know, this way that we are responding to our homelessness crisis through compassion, and also really grateful to Eric and Cupid for the presentation. I appreciate, you know, Slide 5 that demonstrates the continuum of care, ultimately leading to permanent affordable housing, right? That's the trajectory that we are leading with. And I think what I just wanted to uplift in this conversation, and it should be no surprise to my colleagues, because I've said this before, how important the language that we use matters. I think especially, you know, on an issue like homelessness that is the number-one issue in our community, I have witnessed, you know, polarizing remarks and comments, and I just wonder what opportunities we have now or in the future to talk about, you know, words like shelter and how we can either make sure that we're on the same page about what that looks like and what that means for our community, because I've had experiences where... Because I've had experiences where I went to visit a family shelter in District Five. And it was a phenomenal place, it's run very well and has a, it was the family supportive housing shelter. And I'm so grateful that Councilmember Dwan and Councilmember Salas joined me on that visit. Maybe you can also attest to the model and how great the family participation is. But I was disheartened to learn from the executive director that there are families who don't want to go to even a family shelter because it includes the word shelter. And so again, my question to you is, what opportunities do we have to work on the language so that neighbors can be more welcoming of these solutions? And those who need services can also be more willing to accept?
So thank you Councilmember for the question. So the language of shelter, I use as a broad catchall for all the different types of interim housing that we provide, from tiny homes to safe parking, to safe sleeping, to motelling. And so there's just sort of a very broad definition, so hard to capture what all those are. And so I refer to it as sort of the shelter system as a catchall, as it is intended to be a temporary stay transitioning into more permanent housing. So happy to receive feedback on how best to describe it. But with just the wide variety of different landing places that we're managing right now, across an enormous system of 22 different locations with, you know, nearly 1,900 unit spaces, you know, beds, there were so many different definitions in there. It becomes difficult to sort of define it somehow. So welcome feedback on how best we can shape that language.
I know that there is no easy answer for this, but it's a conversation that I think is worth considering and worth having as a council so that we can continue our productive dialogue on how we are addressing homelessness and really encouraging the community to be supportive of the entire spectrum of housing and shelter options and needs that we have as a community. So again, I appreciate your work on this. And I hope to have more opportunities to think about how we're using language, whether it's shelter or even affordable housing. I know is, can be very confusing for the general public that may not necessarily understand AMI and the other, you know, nuances of the work that you do. So thank you again for an incredible job, and yeah, those are my comments.
Thanks Councilmember, appreciate that. And agree, I try to use interim housing wherever possible, though obviously we also have concrete shelter in the system, so it gets complicated to kind of describe the whole continuum. But I think it's a fair point, because it does very much impact what people imagine these sites offer. So it's a good, it's a good point and not an easy thing to answer. Let's go to Councilmember Salas.
Eric, first of all, of course, I have such ultimate confidence in you two. It's just what you're doing is really impressive, it's satisfying, and it's encouraging. And so really kind of what I want to do is empower you a little bit. Because I went to the Taylor site this weekend, and I looked at it and I thought, huh, I don't think that's going to be ready by July. And what I want to make sure you understand is that you talked about we're going to have 1,000 beds in the next year. The first two are going to be critical, we have to make those a success. And I know you want to, and I want to, and everyone here wants to. But sometimes, I've been in construction projects, and the last 5%, everyone's saying hurry, 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 hurry. But these two especially, I say the two because there's the Taylor site, and then the Alora Hotel, which I went to last week and met with the folks. I think those are going to supposedly come on in the next month. And it's critical that we have everything in place. And Vice Mayor, I want you to know that I asked for the drawings for the Alora Hotel, because I want to see those. I met with the people and they have some concerns about the back fences and, you know, it's the people around them that are worried about, you know, they're biased, if you will, about the unhoused. But I want to look at those drawings. And Eric has assured me that what I think wants to be on the drawings is on the drawings, but I also asked for them. And I'd like to also volunteer to look, for you to ask for the drawings, and I'd be happy to look at them for you. But I do want to mention that we're going to set the example for all these thousands in that, in the next two to three months, it's sounding like. And I just really would like to empower you to push back if you need to push back and say, whoa, we're not quite ready. And nobody wants to hear that unless it doesn't work. And when you rush, sometimes it doesn't work. So I do want to bring that up. The other thing I want to mention is, like for instance, my folks at the Alora Hotel are worried about the fence, because the fence backs us up to about 100 residential units. And so I'm hoping you put cameras, I'll be asking for cameras, but I'm, we'll talk about that sort of thing. But all that needs to be known. Also, I wonder, you have security 24 hours, does someone walk around the fences to see if they've been cut or not? And you don't have to answer that now, but all those questions are going to want to be answered by the residents. And then last thing I want to ask you, relative to deference to Vice Mayor Foley, she's lucky, she gets only women, children, and elder women over 50. How are you going to do that? Like in, the Taylor site's going to open up, and are you only going to triage women and children? Or how is that going to work when you're looking to move them out every two weeks?
Okay, thank you Councilmember. So I'll kind of address a couple of your comments and then get into the question. So first, you know, my good colleague Matt Lush in Public Works does yeoman's work to try to move these sites forward and deliver on time, as well as ensuring the high quality there. So any additional time that we could secure as a team in delivering those sites is always appreciated. And I appreciate him and his team's good work in delivering Taylor Street as we're syncing this up with the deliverance of Taylor Street and then the motels. To the question regarding site selection and population selection, as indicated in the memorandum as well as in the PowerPoint presentation, not everyone will necessarily go through the hub based on timing, based on operation, based on need. We'll make some of those determinations sort of on the spot as we are testing out this operational experiment with the Navigation Hub. I've done this in other cities, we know it can work. However, based on needs of women and children coming out of certain encampment sites, they may not need a sort of a temporary stop for triaging. We may want to place them more immediately. And they may also have a shorter stay at that hotel and move to another site because of the needs are so great. As, you know, Cupid and his team issues what's called a VI SPAT, it's a standard tool to better understand an individual's needs. And if those scores are very, very high on that VI SPAT, they may move through the system a lot quicker. So it is not a standard set of moves, Navigation Hub to motel to permanent housing or to other interim housing site. That can shift based on both the needs of the individual being served, and then two, based on sort of the timing of how we're turning on all of this capacity within the system.
And then I have my first outreach meeting with the folks at the Taylor site next week, early next week, I think. I know one of you or both, maybe both of you are going to be there. But for instance, the more confidence we can exude, the better. And you mentioned a dashboard, do you have a mock-up at least of the dashboard we'll be able to show?
So for the dashboard, so the dashboard exists if you're referring to the operation. That's already on the website now, that we can talk through is how that shows sort of move-ins, vacancies, operations, turn-throughs, all of that data. And then in terms of the site and its operations, Oz, Cupid, just talk a little more about that.
Yeah, just really quickly, we should have an operational plan finished, and it'll outline the expectations from site security to data that we're collecting and sharing. So the operator and the community is very aware of what the expectations of the sites are.
Great, and I'll just close by saying, I mentioned it earlier today, that Pacific Hotel, I have not got one complaint. And if we can take that and clone it here, and it's been about, it's been about, well, six months I've been on, and I keep saying, what, nobody's complaining, what's wrong? And so if we can do that for these couple, and not overpromise but overdeliver, it would be, it'll set us up for the whole next two years. So thank you for what you're doing, thank you for letting me worry about it with you, and let's go get them.
Thanks Councilmember, let me turn now to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you Mayor. I appreciate that we, right in District Seven, the Casa Linda Motel would be for our youth LGBTQ+. And then the Fontaine Inn will be for single mom, or single parents with children. I'm glad that you're going to have 24/7 security, but a lot of the concern is, what if we can't fill up the 52 rooms with single moms or single dads, if you will? What is the next step?
So thank you for the question, Councilmembers. So as we look at the preference populations for each of the locations of the motels, we know there is high need out there. We also know that we are targeting particular sites, encampments, individuals coming from the waterways. So as those beds are filled, and if for some reason there is a lack of demand in a particular population, then we can circle back and have a conversation with that. But I don't see that based on our initial statistics being an issue of finding, given that, you know, there's over 3,000 individuals throughout the city who are experiencing homelessness right now.
And thank you, as a single parent, I, you know, I can't imagine if, you know, you and your kids out there in the heat and in the cold, trying to find security and food. And at least we got a place going for them. And just from District Seven alone, we got 86 rooms. That's pretty amazing, and thank you for your hard work.
Thanks Councilmember, I just want to add my thanks to Eric Cupid and the team for all the work you've done on building out this interim housing and shelter system, and specifically for identifying, negotiating, and executing these motel contracts. I also want to thank our Beautify SJ team for the incredibly difficult and often thankless work they do of encampment engagement and management. And over the last year now, resolving encampments along 20 miles of our waterways, something we spent a lot of time discussing last year. And as we all said a year ago, that's only possible if we have more places for people to go. There's no magic wand, we've, you know, nothing's free, right? You got to have, if we want to end unsheltered homelessness, we got to offer people safe dignified alternatives to the streets and to the waterways. I also want to thank my colleagues, and specifically, thank everybody here, but especially Vice Mayor Foley, Councilmember Salas, Councilmember Cohen, and Councilmember Dwan, for hosting these converted motels and hotels in their districts. I know from experience that while saying yes is the right thing to do as a council member, it's really the easy thing to do. And no matter how perfect the site, or how thoughtful the execution plan, or how great the need, there is always at least a vocal subset of folks who are dead-set against it. And we can all empathize with and understand their fears and questions, but we know we have to do something different if we want different results. By the end of this summer, thanks to this work, and to Councilmember Salas's point, give or take pending the discretion of staff, we'll be able to move another 350-plus people who were previously along our waterways and out in our streets into safe, dignified interim housing. And of course, the 331 beds that we've referenced here don't represent a one-to-one ratio of people served. These hotel stays are meant to be a bridge by helping individuals stabilize, reconnect with family, take advantage of services, secure permanent housing solutions, whether subsidized or not. There are different outcomes folks can find that are more permanent, more sustainable, when they have the benefit of the safety, stability, and services of these interim placements. So again, we've seen the system working, it's why San Jose has been leading the way for the Bay Area. And again, I'm just grateful to our team for helping us extend this work and have even more impact in the coming year. We have a motion, I don't see any other hands up, so Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and Tony, are we still counting?
We have the results.
We have the results, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the moment we've all been waiting for, we're going back to item 8.5 to hear the results of the tally. And if you, drumroll please, Tony, I'll turn it over to you.
I have the results regarding the tabulation of property owner ballots for the Alameda Community Benefit Improvement District. The results of the tabulation are, property owners with a total of 111,389.66 votes have returned ballots in support of the levy of assessments. Property owners with a total of 109,907.36 votes have returned ballots in opposition to the levy of assessments. Ballots submitted by property owners in the Alameda County Benefit Community District in support of the levy of assessment exceeds the ballots submitted in opposition to the levy of assessments. The City Council may proceed to vote on the imposition of the assessment.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you to the majority of the property owners who have supported this proposed levy. Since the property owners have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the council to consider adopting a resolution, A, approving the management plan and engineer's report for the Alameda Community Benefit Improvement District, B, declaring the results of the assessment ballot proceeding, and C, directing the city clerk to record the notice of assessment. Do we have a motion, Councilmember Mulcahy?
So move, Mayor.
Okay, second, I heard the second from Casey down here. Councilwoman Mulcahy, any final words?
I can breathe, and I know a bunch of people... I can breathe, and I know a bunch of people who have worked really, really hard to support this. Some people, and you know, are probably maybe a little surprised about how close it was. And I've told this story before, that when we did it in Willow Glen, we would have lost unless a very late fax from Italy that came in from one of the property owners that was counted to put it over the finish line. So these are, but the good news is, with Willow Glen, 15 years later, they not only approved an extension, but expanded the district without any fanfare. So it's one of those things where it's hard to find people who voted against the arena without a hockey team. It's very similar in this case, and I know that the team and the audience who will be leading this will make it super successful, and my office will be fully supportive of the implementation of the district. Thank you.
Thanks Councilmember, and I appreciate you taking the long view and your leadership in this effort. All right, I don't see any other hands, Tony, let's vote.
Wait, hold on, I'm on the wrong item. Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, we're on to item 8.9. This is the public hearing to approve a multifamily housing incentive program, residential tax and fee waiver for the Santana Row Lot 12 development at 358 Hatton Street. There's no staff presentation, hopefully everybody has read the memo. Tony, do we have public comment?
Yes, Patrick McMahon.
Okay.
Patrick McMahon with Federal Realty, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for consideration of this resolution. I was here before you back in May, so I'll make this very quick and very brief. I don't think I could overstate the efficacy, the impactfulness of the MHIPP program. Indeed, this, we've been working on this project, 258 units on Hatton Street at Santana Row for a very long time. And indeed, this package of economic incentives is the tool, is the lever, that will enable this project to move forward now versus continuing to remain on hold for the indefinite future. Since that May meeting, we've continued to advance the project. We're now in a position, we've been working with Lisa Joyner over at Building, we're in a position to pull that building permit in the next couple of weeks. Our intention is to break ground this summer, ideally in July. I'll manage expectations though and keep it at this summer. And I would be remiss if I didn't express my gratitude toward Eric and his team. I think the previous resolution gave you all you...
Thank you, that's your time.
Great, thank you. Coming back to the council, and we'll go to Councilmember Kameh.
Thank you. This demonstrates that, you know, our incentive program really is working. I was delighted to hear that we are going to get affordable housing, as well as be able to really break ground, you know? So I will move the item and thank everyone and Eric for, you know, all your work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for investing in San Jose, and I'm thrilled to see that the rightsizing of our fees and recognizing the market reality is continuing to lead to more housing projects moving forward. This is a really great thing to see. Tony, let's vote.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, one of the things I noticed is that, is it sufficient just to move it, since it does call for a public hearing? Just a question.
I don't believe, I think this constitute, I think public comment constituted the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Is that correct, Tony?
Yeah, sometimes we have to have a more formal script, but this is not one of those.
That's right. We have had a number of scripts today where a more formal script was required for legal purposes, but in this case, public comment counts as the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks for checking. All right. Your screen should have the vote up, looks like everybody's voted.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tony. Great. We're on to Item 8.10. This is the public hearing to approve a multifamily housing incentive program, residential tax and fee waiver for the Zero Sealy Development Building, a development located at Zero Sealy Avenue. No staff presentation. Tony, do we have public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Back to the council, leaving this in Councilmember Cohen's district.
I'll move approval of this item.
All right, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay, and we are on to land use consent. This is Item 10.1A, Plan Development Zoning, Investing Tentative Map and Plan Development Permit for Certain Real Property Located at the West Side of Evergreen Village Square Between Clasico Avenue and Ruby Avenue. It's a consent item, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Great. Tony, any public comment on Item 10.1A?
I have no cards.
Great. Coming back to the council, I don't see any hands, let's vote.
Sorry, I clicked that a little too soon. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any comment cards?
I have none.
No cards? Okay, great. We are adjourned, enjoy the summer break, folks, and we'll see you all soon. Hey, thanks, Carl, we appreciate your service to our residents, you did a great job.